... with the rumble strips throughout the town of Alton. It's not just one highway. In the future, there'll be more highways to Alton. I'd like to have everybody stand at this point for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would, please. Mr. McDonald, can you lead us?
My friend, please. The United States of America, to you, to all, with this change, our nation, under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce the Board of Selectmen to you. To my far left is Paula Rochelle, Virgil McDonald, myself, Reuben Whitworth. And to my far right would be Sally Gunn from the State of New Hampshire DOT, Bill Cass in the center, and Mike Dugus to my immediate right. At this time, we're going to turn the meeting over to the State of New Hampshire DOT, to the three folks here. They're going to give their presentation. And then, when they're done with their presentation, they're going to open the floor up to public input. We have agreed that we'll limit everybody for five minutes, so we can get everybody through that wants to speak to the issues, for or against. I will ask all my neighbors and my friends and my taxpayers out there, let's be courteous, let them show us, let us show them the Alton way. They all have a job to do, just like we do as the Selectmen, or the road agent, or the police department does in this town. We might not agree with it, but let's show our respect to each other as individuals. Thank you. Mr. Cass?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Hopefully, I want to make sure everybody can hear me. I just wanted to give a brief introduction. We are here tonight, essentially, to talk about a pavement resurfacing project. Part of that pavement resurfacing project ends up over a section of Route 28 here in Alton and in Wolfboro that contains rumble strips. And in short, the proposal is to reinstall the rumble strips after the road is resurfaced, but in accordance with our updated and revised guidelines. Several years ago, in 2016, we had issued a statewide project to install safety rumble strips on a series of state highways. Route 28 in Alton was one of those areas. We also had installed in that same summer rumble strips on Route 9 through Hopkinton, Henneker, all the way to Chesterfield, on Route 102 in Dairy and London Dairy, and on Route 25 in Plymouth. This has been an ongoing kind of systematic effort to approach safety with some low-cost, effective safety countermeasures to address some of the concerns with distracted driving, centerline encroachment, and do what we can to help keep vehicles in their lane and prevent more serious accidents. When we installed the rumble strips in 2016, we installed them both in the centerline and along the edge lines. And that created quite a stir. They were very narrow and created a lot of feedback. As a result of that, we did try to address those concerns, both here in Plymouth and in several other areas on Route 9 and Chesterfield. We did recognize that it made things too narrow, and we came back and we removed the rumble stripes along the edge lines, but were fairly insistent that the rumble strips along the centerline do provide a strong safety benefit. So even with further, I know we were up in Alton, we had several other meetings with the Board of Selectmen and the folks, but we were pretty insistent that the centerline rumble strip should remain. We did acknowledge that there are newer technologies and a lot of body of evidence growing in the research community. And we knew that in 2019, we'd be resurfacing Route 28, and we made the commitment that we would look at and revise our guidelines according to the most up-to-date research and in taking into consideration the feedback we heard from all of these projects. So essentially, that's a brief recap of why we're here tonight. We were with the Board of Selectmen in early April, talking about the upcoming resurfacing project, our revised guidelines and our proposal to reinstall the rumble strips along Route 28. As a result of that meeting, the Board of Selectmen asked that we hold a broader public hearing. So that's what we're here for tonight. Public hearing, to receive public input at the request of the Board of Selectmen. And we're very pleased to see the participation here tonight. So with that introduction, I'm going to ask Mike Dugus, the Department Safety Engineer, to discuss what rumble strips are, what has changed in our guidelines and what the proposal is along Route 28, and then we'll open it up to questions. So, Mike?
Thank you, Bill. Good evening, everybody. Again, as Bill said, my title at the DOT is Highway Safety Engineer, which means my primary job function is to deliver projects that improve the safety of the highways in New Hampshire, with a focus on reducing the number and severity of fatal and serious injury crashes. My whole presentation shouldn't take more than five minutes, I'll keep it very brief. I did want to touch very quickly on the basics of rumble strips, in case we have anybody new here, so we can have an equal understanding of the concepts involved. And then I'll go into some of the changes that we've made to our policy for rumble strips, to try to address some of the concerns that we've heard here in Alton and other places throughout the state. And again, the purpose of the changes that we've made, and I'll talk about those in a moment, to our policies is to reduce the incidence of inadvertent or errant strikes on rumble strips, the truly nuisance noise generation that really isn't serving a safety purpose. And so I'll get into that in just a moment. So first of all, the basics of rumble strips, what are they? In simplest terms, they are grooves that we cut into the center and sometimes on the shoulders of highways. When a car runs on them, it creates noise and vibration within the car to alert the driver that they're leaving their lane. Outside the car, certainly, it makes noise as well, and that's been the issue that we've been trying to deal with. It's very common for drivers to stray from their lanes for a variety of reasons. They could be drowsy, they could simply be inattentive, distracted, they could be impaired in some fashion. So the reason that we pursue rumble strips as a safety measure on our highways is because, let's talk about the numbers for just a moment. In recent years, the number of fatalities across the state has varied between roughly 100 and 150 people every year. In addition to that, we have about 450 serious injuries as well on top of that number. And looking at the crash types that we have in New Hampshire, about two-thirds of those crashes are the result of road departures, people leaving their lane of travel, and then either crossing into the opposing traffic, or exiting the lane to the right and running off the road. Really, the most effective way to treat, the most effective safety measure is to keep people in the lane or traffic. Once they're out of the lane or traffic, then you're dealing with more expensive fixes such as making the roadside more forgiving in case they run off the pavement, or installing guardrail. But guardrail in itself is a hazard as well. And then finally, on the basics of rumble strips, really, just a quick note on how effective they've shown to be in other parts of the country. The best research that we have regarding centerline rumble strips is that they reduce the incidence of crossover crashes by about 45%. It does vary by site, but that's the most comprehensive study that's available to us. When you talk about shoulder rumble strips as well, they're shown to reduce the incidence of runoff-the-road crashes by about 36%. So they're shown to be a very effective safety measure. And I should mention that the numbers that I just stated there, those are specific to rural two-lane highways, such as what we're talking about tonight here in Alton. Now, I'll touch on the different ways that we tried to modify our rumble strip guidelines to address some of the concerns that we've heard here and elsewhere. And again, the focus of these changes is to reduce the incidence of errant strikes, reduce the chances for people to mistakenly run over the rumbles, or reduce the noise when they legitimately run over the rumbles, such as in a passing zone along a highway. So we've approached that from two angles. First of all, by looking at changing the type of rumble strips we use in certain areas, and also then modifying where we put those rumble strips. As Bill said in his opening, that when we first installed the shoulder rumbles in Alton, we put them on the white stripe, which put them right, very close to where the traffic is traveling. So on other highways, we tend to put them onto the shoulder. Very often, the consideration is you want to leave enough space beyond the rumble for bikes to operate. You don't want to sacrifice the space for the bikes. So some of the key elements of our draft rumble strip guidelines, and the town does have a copy, I don't know if they've been circulated at all, but they are, oh, there you go, they're in the back of the room. So some of the key elements of the revised guidelines, and again, they are in draft form still. First of all, we propose to use mumble strips as our primary rumble strip type. And I'll explain in a moment what mumble strips are. They're, in basic terms, they're a quieter design for rumble strip. But these will be used on roads that are narrower than a certain dimension, which is most of the state highways that we deal with. And then also, on wider roads, we propose to use those in passing zones. So again, places where people are legitimately crossing the centerline, trying to reduce the noise of when people strike those rumbles. The second element of our rumble strip guidelines is that we do plan to continue installing rumble strips on the shoulders of highways because of the safety benefits they offer. However, we will not any longer put them on the stripe. We'll put them one foot into the shoulder, thereby also reducing the incidence of inadvertent strikes on those rumble strips. And then thirdly, we propose to be more generous in providing openings for legitimate access points, so side roads, major driveways, as people are slowing down to make a right turn, let's say, or a left turn, and they're pulling either onto the shoulder, or they're approaching the centerline of the highway, stop those rumbles soon enough that people aren't unnecessarily running over the rumble strips near those access points. And then finally, for a little bit more information on what I've called mumble strips, they are also known as sinusoidal. It's a technical term for the shape of the rumble strip itself. So where a traditional rumble strip is a series of discreet milled rectangles in the pavement, a mumble strip is, in comparison, it's a continuous milling of the pavement with a wavy surface. And so it's a lot less aggressive when a tire runs over it, and it generates less noise. Now, it's, the concern that we and DOTs throughout the country have had is we're trying to seek a rumble design that generates less noise, but is still an effective safety measure. We feel that with the design that we're including in our draft guidelines, we have achieved that. We're using a design that is becoming more common across the country. In fact, both Massachusetts and Maine are now including mumble strips in their rumble Now, an important note about mumble strips, so they are quieter within the vehicle itself. They do provide enough vibration to alert a driver who is leaving their lanes. They do provide also less noise to the outside of the vehicle. And so hopefully, that would provide some relief to those inadvertent strikes of rumbles. Now, one drawback of mumble strips, because they're quieter and because of their dimensions that they have, research has shown that heavy trucks really don't feel them at all. Now, we've considered that as a drawback, however, we feel it's an acceptable risk because generally, heavy trucks are being driven by professional drivers. And so there is that to take into account. And then, just one anecdotal comment that I would insert here is that in the states that we've talked to that have, I would say, installed the most mumble strips, they have generally found few, if any complaints, when they have replaced traditional strips with the quieter rumble strips, these mumble strips. So that concludes my quick presentation. Back to you?
Sure. Good. So, like I said, I just wanted to also point out that, again, a lot of focus on the rumble strips, mumble strips here, it is in the context of an overall resurfacing project. We are looking at, the project has been advertised, the bids haven't come in and been opened yet, but that resurfacing will probably take place, we'll have to work with the contractor. As far as the exact timing, it'll probably span over two seasons, because we're getting it advertised later this year. So I would anticipate that most of the resurfacing and the work would either happen very late this year, or probably into the next construction season, so spring, summer of 2020, as that gets out and gets built. So with that said, I think we wanted to make sure we open it up to public input. I would ask, I know there's a number of state elected officials here have been involved. Typically, I would seek, if they want to offer comment, first, any state or elected officials.
Let's say officials. I'm a highway manager for the town of Alton. Couple things I've looked at in this thing, and I've been listening to this, sat on the sidelines through most of the meetings that you've performed, but I haven't seen at all that was given to you. You always talk about the corridor. The corridor is really big. We haven't talked about the corridor in Alton, just Alton. You show all these crashes and everything throughout the Route 28 corridor, which is a very big corridor, but not Alton itself. This is what biggest complaint is that everybody's talking about, well, there's nothing going on up there, it hasn't happened there. Not saying that it won't happen, and not saying we don't protect people, don't get me wrong. I just bought a new truck. The thing's driving me nuts. You know why? It's got a lane departure alert. You think rumble strips are bad? You ought to listen to this thing. Beep, 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 beep. Why isn't there a requirement from federal government, rather than putting in rumble strips, that we have lane departure alerts put in all vehicles? That cannot be disabled. It would sure be a whole lot easier than listening to this thing. Now, I live almost 800 yards, I live on Main Street. I listen to the rumble strips on Route 28. And I listen to them every morning, and I'll tell you why. When the state redesigned part of 28 from the Alton traffic circle up, they never put a slow lane in. Do you know what it's like a tractor and trailer coming out of a stoplight? And climbing a hill all the way to the top of Bay Hill Road? You know the project?
Every morning.
What do you think they do, what's a courteous driver do? He pulls over in a breakdown lane to climb it so the cars can pass. You think those cars pass directly on top of the yellow line? Oh, yeah. So you got a big passing zone that is done by courtesy only, but still, who listens to it? Everybody on Main Street. I bet, Reuben, you can hear it at your store. That's how loud it is. Just an example, redesign, you're repaving, but is there a redesigning project to remove some of this? I mean, that's a courtesy thing. That's, every trucker I know, every local trucker I know, pulls to that breakdown lane so people can go by. Well, people go by, and they're riding on the rumble strips. Couple other things, and that goes from basically the American Legion all the way to Bay Hill, which is the top of the hill. And that's a slow climb for a big haul. Hazards in the winter. Now, I plow. I run a plow, I run a good size 250. And I'll tell you what, I ride up that road, and unfortunately, you guys probably hear me, you don't see those rumble strips in the middle of the night. Not when the state doesn't plow from 11:00 to 4:00 in the morning, so I'm riding on snow. Now, I'm good at what I do, but if anybody that's inexperienced hits those rumble strips, hang on. You put four inches of snow on top of those things and hit them, you better be paying attention to what you're doing. Now you want to put them in a breakdown lane where somebody wants to pull off to the side and there's snow covered? If there's any guardrails there, that's a crash waiting to happen. You're asking for trouble because you do lose contact with the highway, with all that snow on it. Some considerations got to be made with that. You mentioned guardrail before. Well, you know, we did this thing with federal highways years ago when they came out with a new crash guardrail. You know, there was a big problem with that, and I don't see that being fixed as of yet. So we talked to motorcycles. Now, I ride a bike, I got a brand-new 2018 Harley. Do you know what it's like to hit one of those rumble strips with a 2018 Harley doing 55 miles an hour? You better know how to ride. And if you don't, you're going to get a heck of a surprise, because you can change lanes without trying. And it will. You only got two wheels on the ground, you put them in the rumble strips, you're bouncing all over the place. I think it's a hazard. Now, I ride a bike, and I've been riding a bike since I was a little kid. I'm 63 years old. I know how to ride, but again, I think there's a hazard, and unless you get on that bike and you take a ride up there and run down those rumble strips, then you really don't know what we're talking about. But I know you've got people in the state that ride. Has anybody tested these things out with a rider, an inexperienced rider? Coming right out of the State House, right there at the Licensing Bureau, and tell you, go hit the rumble strips and see how you do. I don't know. Little thought to that. And the last question I have, just so I can keep under my five minutes. Unusual thing in Route 93 in Concord, you had rumble strips down the sidelines. They all got removed. Was there a reason for that? Only a thought.
I'm not sure about 93 in Concord. I think unless it's part of a resurfacing, I'm sure they'll be going back in. I know that other areas on the turnpike where sometimes we have the rumble strip reinstalled as part of a resurfacing project, sometimes they come as a separate project because of the economy of scale of trying to put them back in.
Well, I know right after they went in, they were removed.
They were removed.
Before this even came up as a discussion.
That's so they don't hear it at the State House.
Vote, vote, vote!
Yeah.
Representative Raymond Howard, and I want to talk to my constituents tonight. You know, statistics, you can twist statistics any way you want, but this is one thing that the first question we need to ask is are we a government of the people, or are we a people of the government? Article 1 has the answer to that. It says, "All people are born with equal rights." That means, if, why should we have to live with these things just so someone else might not leave the centerline or the edge of the road? No, that's not right. All government powers come from the people, and the government is founded on the consent of the people. Well, from what I've heard about these rumble strips, the people really don't consent to them. I've never heard anybody say, "Oh, I love them. They make me feel great." DOT says that they want to have a discussion. Well, I tried that in the legislature this year. Another rep from Allentown, his constituents came to him and said, "Can't you do something about these rumble strips?" So him and I got together, co-sponsored legislation, it went before the Transportation Committee. The legislation wasn't exactly what we wanted to start with, but with the help of the members of the Transportation Committee, we got it turned into a study committee, so we could talk about it. The vote was 18 to 0. That meant it went on the consent calendar. There was no debate on the House floor. Next thing we know, DOT goes to the Speaker and says, "Hey, you got to kill this thing. Send it to another committee." So we did. We sent it to Public Works and Highway. Sure enough, they killed it. I'm telling you, folks, it's time that we speak up and tell the government that we are in control. If we don't like something, you have to listen to us, or else we're going to have to, well, I won't get into that right now, but there is a remedy to this.
Kenny mentioned about the motorcycles on the rumble strips, but I was on my motorcycle, and the road lane was dry, but there was still water in the rumble strips, and a car passed, and I got soaked. Couldn't see, blinded because it was all water spraying up my face. So I am vehemently against these rumble strips. Kenny's right, they were taken out of Concord, because I remember seeing that, and they were cut out, just like they were cut out over here on 28. And you guys can call them mumble strips, but I call them bumble strips, because they were put in wrong to begin with. And I don't know where you guys were when they were put in, but they're too deep, and none of that, but if you go up 28 here, where they put the rumble strips in, if you look, the road, the hot tub's coming out. It's coming out of the center.
The road rocks out, it's going to crack into the car paint, and that's just going to break some of those windows.
Wait a minute, one at a time.
And I drive a truck, so if this happens, it could definitely hurt somebody behind me. And I don't, for the life of me, I can't understand why you put them in there, because typically, they put the bottom coat in, then they put a top coat over top of it, like what they're doing over here. Well, the top coat, how thick is the top coat? Inch? Two inches? Well, they put the rumble strips below that two inches. That means the water's getting in between those layers of pavement. Now, if you look, after a rainstorm, some of those holes have water in them, and some don't. Where's the water going? Between the layers of the hot tub and down below. And it freezes in the wintertime, and it's going to destroy the road. Now, it seems to me that the money could be very well spent fixing the roads instead of destroying the roads, putting these rumble or mumble, whatever you call them, strips in. All right? They do damage to a car. Anybody knows anything about any kind of mechanics or anything about a car, they do damage to a car. And myself, I got a truck, there's kingpins in there, and there's thrust barons on the bottom, and when you run over those rumble strips, all they're doing is beating those barons all to hell. They are no good. I don't want to see them in Alton at all. And if you're only talking 100 accidents in the state of New Hampshire, what's the population of Alton, I ask?
Not 100 accidents, it's 100 deaths.
What?
It's not 100 accidents, it's 100 deaths.
In the whole state of New Hampshire?
100 fatalities.
In the whole state of New Hampshire?
Yes.
What's the population in New Hampshire grow to in the summer, Reuben?
In Alton, you mean?
In Alton, just in Alton.
In Alton, it's around 11,000.
In Alton, for the summer?
55 year-round.
All right. And year-round, we're 55, I thought we were around 4,000, okay, whatever, I thought we were 4,000, okay. What do all these other cities and towns grow to in the summertime? And you're talking 100 deaths. Now, you want to talk statistics, how many of them was deer running across the road, or a moose running across the road, or getting hit by a turkey, or running off the road, or whatever? Don't come out with statistics unless you can legitimately say specifically what these accidents were. All right? Just throwing out statistics don't mean nothing to me. Okay? So I'm vehemently against it. They messed with the circle down there. Last Monday, they had to have a police officer down there to wave people through the yield signs, because the signs are all messed up down there at the circle. So they had to redirect, they had to have cops down there to stop people that had the right of way to let the people with the yield signs go through, because the traffic was backed up 28.
What was that from? Was that just?
Holiday weekend.
Holiday weekend. Memorial Day weekend.
It's the main corridor.
But that's pretty common.
Yeah.
That's pretty common, traffic back through Alton now with the motorcycle racing, all because the signs got changed. So I really don't have much faith in, you know, you guys putting in the rumble strips, I really don't, because they're putting it wrong to begin with. So, hey, on that, I want to thank you guys, and I don't want to see it. And I'll say one other thing, too, is I know on some of the, particularly on some of the exit ramps, if you look in some of those, that you'll see nails, screws, and everything else that just get collected in all those holes. And that's a fact. So I say no.
Okay.
Good evening, Sylvia Leggett. I live at 76 Gilman's Corner Road. I've got a little brief thing to read, but I would like to comment on two things. The truck lane for people coming up out of Alton, when you leave the traffic light and you go up to the top of Bay Hill, you're 100% correct that the courteous truckers move over, and if you insist upon putting your shoulder rumble strips on that, you're going to be creating a double nuisance, because the trucks are going to be hitting that shoulder rumble strip, and the people who are going by those strip and the people who are going by, those trucks are going to be hitting the center line rumble strip. So that's my comment on that. And secondly, again, when you go across Route 293 and you exit 293 South onto Route 93, the rumble strips have been milled and filled. The person who is absent here tonight is Ronald Grand Mason. Back in 2016, when these went in, I in 2016 asked him about why those rumble strips on the side of 93 had been filled in. And his comment to me three years ago or two and a half years ago was, "We're going to be doing a construction project." Well, it's taken you a heck of a long time to start your construction project. I think it's due to the noise levels that were created by people who were driving on that side of 93. The Capitol's right there, there's a hotel right there, and I think those rumble strips were removed because of noise. Because two and a half years to wait for a construction project to take place does not agree with me for them being milled and filled in 2016. Anyway, that's just my couple of sides.
Sylvia, you said 293?
Well, if you go across, if you go across, if you go, excuse me, 393, 393, excuse me, 393 and get on 93 South, which is right, then you're on exit 14, 13, 12.
Okay.
All along there, they've been milled, they've been milled and filled all along there on that side of 93 going south.
I can answer that question. Now, I know what you mean. Part of that reason was filled, that reason was filled because of the race day traffic. We used to borrow a lane of traffic for the race day. 93 northbound, we used to put out cones and barrels. So for the three lanes, southbound leaving the track, there were two lanes on 93 on the southbound barrel, we used one lane of the northbound barrel. When we redid the bridges in Bojunkian over I-89, that had been the pinch point. When we redid those bridges, we could fit three lanes southbound within the I-93 southbound corridor for the whole distance. We did a little bit of, we did a little bit of work at some of the noses at exit 13. So the reason why those rumble strips were removed was because on race weekends, we run traffic on the shoulders.
Well, just think about the traffic, because just think about the traffic that runs on the shoulder every day when they go through the traffic light and go up Bay Hill because there are a lot of courteous people that pull over there. And I didn't even mention Robert Stone Campground because I'm no longer the owner of Robert Stone Campground as of May 7th. But when people are turning into Robert Stone Campground, there's a continuous slide of traffic going north that again, and I don't know if it's legal or illegal to go around on, you know, the shoulders wide enough so they can do it. The white line is there and hopefully there'll never be a shoulder rumble strip there because that'll just create more noise than ever before if it's there. But anyway. You know, Route 28 goes through our town of Alton for several miles and I recognize it is a state highway. However, it has become apparent to me that the town of Alton has no say in this corridor. This is a sad reflection on how our state government works with any local control being usurped by the state. I am hopeful that tonight we can see a change in this process with the citizens and officials of Alton giving the opportunity to have true input in the process. The new draft guidelines for the installation of rumble strips state that the Federal Highway Administration and the New Hampshire DLT recommend rumble strips being installed proactively and systematically, systemically along stretches of roadway with particular characteristics rather than reactively in response to particular crashes which have occurred. These characteristics include any roadway with a minimum speed of 40 miles per hour and a minimum pavement width of 28 feet. In this approach, corridor crash history is not considered for identifying rumble strip treatment locations. Basically, put the rumble strips everywhere. Another method discussed by the Federal Highway Administration, but not included in the New Hampshire DOT guidelines, is called specific corridor safety improvements. Install rumble strips where there have been significant crashes. If the stated objective of New Hampshire DOT is to meet community goals and protect and enhance the environment, I see this as a compromise that still meets public safety needs. Going back to November 2016, New Hampshire DOT spokesman Bill Boynton stated, "We weren't flexible enough for some of the specific characteristics of those roads, the roads you talked about, Route 28, Route 9, Route 3A and Route 102. We tried to apply a one-size-fits-all to four different corridors." These new draft guidelines promote that same mentality. All corridors are not the same and the continuation of the systemic approach will only foster more public outcry. Also, back in 2016, in a July 29th letter to the town of Plymouth, not to the town of Alton, New Hampshire DOT Commissioner Sheehan stated that center line rumble strips on New Hampshire Route 3A would be removed and went on to say, "This is in recognition that an overall consistent plan for the rest of the New Hampshire 3A corridor of similar width and character has not been thought through." Did she not recognize in that statement that all roadways are not the same and that each corridor needs specific safety improvements? Let's take a closer look at our New Hampshire 28 corridor in Alton. Our roadway is one of New Hampshire's scenic and cultural byways. This program was established in 1992 under RSA 23819. To provide the opportunity for residents and visitors to travel a system of byways which feature the scenic and cultural qualities of the state within the existing highway system, promote retention of rural and urban scenic byways, support the cultural, recreational and historic attributes along these byways, and expose the unique elements of the state's beauty, culture and history. And I apologize for being so little, but our eight miles of road from Wolfboro down to Alton is definitely part of the scenic and cultural byways. Along this way, we have a scenic viewpoint that the state put in. We have a picnic area that the state put in by Roberts Cove Road. The town, Gilman's Town Conservation Area, there's over 300 acres of conservation land there. I walk that area two or three times a day with my dogs and two or three days, two or three times a day I'm serenaded by rumble strips. Just up the road, National Historic Registry, the East Alton Meeting House. And for the folks who said they heard rumble strips right on Main Street, Monument Square, including the Town Hall are also National Historic Registered Buildings. More conservation areas just off of Chestnut Cove Road and Route 28, Cotton, Herd, Brook, Woodlands. Another one off of 28, Reins Road, Knights Pond Conservation Area. These are all part of our local environment and they're all part of the scenic byway that Route 28 is for us going through Alton. What I've seen, what I've seen on a couple of state roads, and I was told by Mr. Grand Mason, because I challenged him, that there were rumble strips that continued beyond the point where I saw these signs, is a nice sign that says, "End of Rumble Strips." And I'm hoping that we can have an end of rumble strips here in Alton. And the reason we have most of our accidents here in Alton is because of this deer crossing sign that is right at the bottom, right as you start up from Hannaford, there's a nice deer crossing sign there, but we forgot to tell the deer to read that sign. You know, just to repeat, our eight miles of the byway provides us with many recreational opportunities and historic attributes. No other community along New Hampshire Route 28 has Lake Winnipesaukee, one of the shining jewels of New Hampshire's tourism industry. Alton is a vacation destination in a rural residential community. We want to keep it that way by preserving the natural environment and not degrading it with the sounds of rumble strips. If New Hampshire DOT wants to truly protect and enhance the environment of Alton, which they stated in their notice to us that that was one of the things that they were looking to do was to protect and enhance the environment, please reconsider your plans to reinstall rumble strips on New Hampshire Route 28.
So which one goes first? How do you do this?
You're up first. Robin, you got to wait for a minute, this one wins up first.
I live at 6 Gilman's Corner Road in Alton, New Hampshire, which is right.
Just Nate first and last name.
Oh, I've never done this before, so you have to prompt me. My name is Belinda McLean. I live at 6 Gilman's Corner Road in Alton. I'm going to tell you something, I can't even sit in my backyard. It echoes from wherever it starts, all the way past the scenic view. Okay? And I can hear it all the way, I can hear bikes coming from Wolfboro. You have to take into consideration where you're locating these things because the way this echoes through that valley is totally disturbing. I have to take medication because of it. When somebody's anxiety ridden, this will create some anxiety issues. Also, it does throw rocks up. I have scratches, it's hit my windshield, and I also have paint damage on my car from rocks flying out of the rumble strips. Also, everybody that is 100 feet from a rumble strip should automatically get a tax abatement. It shouldn't. Thank you. You should not have to fill out a five-page form that has all kinds of RSAs on it that you don't want to fill out because it's so complicated. You should automatically give people a tax abatement. If these rumble strips are a joke, I used to live in a very peaceful area, now I live in a very noisy area. I am by the Catherine Driscoll Church, I don't know. And plus, this is a vacation destination. When people come off of 28 North from Concord, 93, and they're going to Wolfboro, what do you think they're going to do? Go all the way to Laconia to get there? No. They're going to go through Alton, 28 North, by my house and many other people in this room. Okay? This is a joke. You have disturbed us immensely. It's a disruption to our lives, to our historical town, to the beautiful area that we live in. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves.
Robin Lane, resident here in Alton. I'd like to begin with, I don't believe anyone in this town wants to see anyone, anywhere, killed or hurt in a car crash. I'd like to make that very important. However, I do not believe that the government has any right to put forth any action that the people they serve protest. You state this is federally funded. We, the taxpayers, are the ones that pay, fill out those federal funds. I'd like to make that clear. Further, there are no statistics to prove that these rumble strips actually do save lives. I'm going to cite some facts here that may argue your point that they do. In 2016, according to data from National Safety Council, deaths on New Hampshire roads and highways during the first six months of 2016 were 61% higher than in the first six months of either 2015 or 2014. I'd like to add here that rumble strips in these last few years have been continuing to be added to our roads, so you would think that our statistics would get better because we were promised they would get better. In 2017, Captain John Marasco, who oversees the Office of Highway Safety, reported, "It is difficult to draw conclusions from the information so far this year because data about New Hampshire road fatalities often fluctuate due to the numbers being relatively small." For example, 2016 saw a 19% increase in road fatalities over 2015 while the number of total crashes were largely unchanged. December 30th of 2018, Todd Feathers of the New Hampshire Union Leader reported, "As of December 20th, there had been 128 crashes causing 141 deaths," according to the Department of Safety data. That was up 36 and 44% respectively from last year when there were 92 crashes and 97 deaths. Not since 2005, 156 crashes caused 166 deaths have there been more fatalities. New Hampshire State Police reported on January 19th cites 145 crashes in 2018, up from 102 in 2017. These numbers are higher than the numbers that are reported in 2004 before mumble strips. I submit that these numbers support the fact that rumble strips have made no difference in the fatality rates here in Alton, no less than New Hampshire. In fact, the results are worse. DOT, they showed up at our Selectmen's Meeting in 2016 and two months ago with skewed numbers. I looked elsewhere for the facts. These are the facts that I found and they're from New Hampshire State Police, as I've read. Perhaps the devices that are being put in the newer cars to warn the driver of leaving his or her lane be looked into for government rebates perhaps to help people with older vehicles. Just a suggestion. They warn you when you're crossing that line. Didn't know they were that annoying, Ken. New Hampshire has a population of 1,356 people. With these horrible results that can be found on the internet, how do you justify ruining the peace and quiet of our properties? How do you justify properties losing value and becoming downright unsellable due to intrusions of noise? You're ruining the American dream. I firmly believe residents' lives here are important too.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner, Select Board. Thank you very much for letting somebody from Wolfboro here to say a few words. My name is Jeb Bradley. I live in Wolfboro. I hope, Commissioner, you will reconsider the decision to reinstall these rumble strips. I'm not a safety expert, but I do drive the road several times a week, each way back and forth to Concord. And I've driven it with my own Subaru. I don't own a motorcycle. God forbid I owned a motorcycle trying to cross a rumble strip. I've also driven it with a friend of mine who has a big truck, there he is right there. And it just, it's a very difficult situation, I think, for large trucks, as your road agent talked about. So I think while rumble strips are designed to enhance safety, in many measures, they can undermine safety too. And driving these roads, as I do in virtually all conditions, wet roads, icy roads, snowy roads, the accumulation in particular of moisture, ice and snow and rumble strips leads to unsafe situations, even though I have a great car, I personally experienced that. So I think there are real safety issues with the installation of rumble strips. I know you're trying to prevent accidents. There's no question, I think you've heard far more than I can say about the impact on people's lives with the noise of rumble strips. So I would ask that you reconsider the decision to install rumble strips as you do the paving. But if rumble strips are going to come back, please don't do them in passing areas. Make sure they're far enough away from the white fog line that there is a much, much, much more judicious use of any of these kind of, you know, safety measures, rumble strips, as you repave. I think it would be far better not to have any, but certainly much more limited use is preferable to the situation that we have today, which is pretty unlimited, both in terms of the noise factor, but also, I think, as we've heard from people more expert than me, the impact on trucks, on motorcycles, and yes, even cars. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Fairman Eaton and I'd speak to two points here. First of all, my family's lived on Meramichie Hill Road for over 65 years. In fact, we were living there when Route 28 was put in in the first place. It wasn't there when my family moved in. The rumble strips have been a terrible addition that I do not understand. I understand the goal for increasing road safety, but the noise factor, and I think it's so important when we stand and we look at what we have, the reasons we choose to live in New Hampshire, why we appreciate the beautiful nature of our area, all the reasons why, and that part is so important to preserve, that we have to take into account all the different kinds of pollution and protect them, protect our area from them. So we know we have to protect our waters. We know that our economy and our quality of living here, all the reasons we want to be here, depends on keeping our clean water. be here, depends on keeping our clean water. We also know that we have to watch for the sign pollution, and we've talked about that, not having too many signs. Too many signs are a distraction, they don't work. That's another sort of pollution. We know about light pollution, that we work to keep our lights down now instead of up. These are all considerations we take care of and we consider in our planning and zoning today. They all affect both our economy and our quality of life. Two points that are very much intertwined, I believe. So let's talk about noise pollution. The rumble strips, I just don't see the number of accidents, and I'm aware of the major ones that we've had on Route 28, and I'm speaking north of the circle. But I know of none that have been in the area where I, my family has lived and where I live now, Merameechi Hill Road. I do know that there's a whole lot more people in that area than there were 65 years ago. There wasn't another kid for me to play with within two miles, although my neighbors were the Roberts. But so, and they were two, three miles away. Today, there are a whole lot of new houses, and I know that there have been some lots. Dave Count, we sold some nice lots up there, right off of Merameechi Hill Road and the old Wolfboro Road where they tie together, and their ones in the back are gone. But there's one right up close there. I'm living at 41 Merameechi Hill Road, and I'm as close to the highway as folks there at Gilman's Corner. And boy, those rumble strips. There's only one right now. I hate to think of there being three, and I implore you, please do not, when you repave, fill those rumble strips up and don't put any more in. Now, I'd like to speak to the issue of large vehicles on the road and the impact that the rumble strips have for the safety in driving a vehicle. My husband and I also own the Wolfboro Trolley Company, and Molly, the trolley, does lots of traveling throughout the Lakes Region, central part of the state, and Route 28 is no exception to that. But I'd like you to think about these rumble strips all over the place. Molly's a little wider, I don't know if you're familiar with her, but she's a trolley. We do tours and we do charters here in the Lakes Region, have for 32 years. The rumble strips do not please her at all. I'm one of the drivers, and I can tell you that we're wider than most vehicles, as well as longer. And when you touch one of those rumble strips, it is a distraction, it is discomfort, and a very unpleasant experience for our passengers. And it's dangerous. It throws you right off. I mean, having that little drop after the other side of the white line that goes down to the breakdown lane, that's enough! That tells the driver, whoops, we're not there. I just think the rumble strips are just way, I don't know where they came from, but we got along without them for a long time, and we can get along without them in the future, too. Please listen to what the people who are driving these roads say to have, are telling you, people in business and people personally living here. Thank you for listening.
Leil Paulson, 401 Drew Hill Road in Alton. Let me start out by saying that I would certainly prefer that the shoulder rumble strips not be reinstalled, and if the center rumble strips have to go back in, that they should all be sinusoidal. If that's not gonna be the case, though, I think we need to take a good, hard look, do some careful planning to try and eliminate some of these hits. I'm not concerned about what you call the errant hits. I can handle that. I think most of us could handle that. What I'm talking about are the built-in hits that happen over and over and over again. The guidelines mention that the shoulder rumble strips will be discontinued 300 feet before a right turn intersection, and the same at a frequently utilized left turn intersection. Obviously, you recognize that people are pulling off and they're gonna hit those rumble strips. If you recognize that, then you must also recognize that you need to extend that interval in the centerline rumble strips. A vehicle, or vehicles behind a car making a right turn will more often than not move out to or over the centerline to pass the vehicle making the turn. This often occurs even if the turning vehicle is completely on the shoulder past the shoulder lines. This is just another example of a frequent built-in rumble strip hit. Extending the gap in those rumble strips would appear to me to be of negligible consequence to the overall rumble strip program. If you're gonna extend the side rumble strips 300 feet, make that gap, then you should do the same with the centerline rumble strips. Extending the interval to the center rumble strips on the left turn approach to some intersections would also reduce the number of built-in hits. With trailing vehicles, it's not uncommon for cars making a left turn to exit 28 diagonally at a higher rate of speed, rather than slow down enough to make the 90-degree turn. This is because of trailing vehicles that are often at a close interval that intend to pass to the right without breaking speed. It's an uncomfortable feeling, and the idea is to get off 28 just as quickly as possible. This then becomes another built-in hit. It's already been mentioned about the heavy trucks. I mean, the same situation occurs near Drew Hill Road and 28 with the trucks coming out of the gravel pit, coming up the side, getting off the road, coming down into the gravel pit, and that's already been covered. That's another built-in hit.
And that's, that's low-mo trucks that are moving over and using the shoulder?
Right. Coming from Wolfboro down the hill, oftentimes the trucks will pull off to the right well, well before the gravel pit, to be able to allow cars to go by. Same thing coming up, going into Wolfboro. It's an uphill grind, they'll pull off to the right until they get enough speed or even get to the top of the hill. That's way over 300 feet. I think we need to become a little bit more creative if the rumble strips are going back in. I would ask, for example, whether consideration could be given to discontinuing the centerline rumble strips in, say, the first 200 feet of a passing zone? An area where probably the majority of the time, people are gonna start to pass. Clearly, they would be coming back across the centerline rumble strips after the pass is completed, but this would at least reduce the number of built-in hits without appreciably impacting rumble strip effectiveness. I would also suggest extending the sinusoidal strips for a couple hundred feet after the resumption of a no-passing zone. And that's for those that are pushing the envelope in the passing zone. And I have a question, perhaps you answered at the beginning. Is the reason that we are not installing sinusoidal rumble strips everywhere solely cost-related? It's not. If it's already been said that the large trucks are not the issue because we have professional drivers, then why can't we, if we're gonna put the rumble strips back in, use exclusively sinusoidal rumble strips?
Yeah, no, that, we debated that quite a bit when we were revising these. There is a cost situation, and as Mike had pointed out, the real goal with the sinusoidal was to put them in areas where there could be not errant hits, but maybe unanticipated hits that were, you know, not errant, things like passing zones and stuff.
Well, we know from the side...
And on passing zones, you know, the effectiveness of the regular rumble strips, where there really should be no reason for any vehicle to be going over the, over the centerline, kind of weighed that decision into not doing sinusoidal everywhere.
What would it take to get, I mean, can we do a GoFundMe?
It wasn't solely, it wasn't solely cost, that is one...
Well, I truly urge you then, if they're gonna go back...
But also the effectiveness, it's also...
I would truly urge you, if you're gonna do the rumble strips everywhere, go with the sinusoidal. Please. I know we don't want them, but if they're gonna go there, we might as well not have the Minnesota rumble strips.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yes, I know. They're going with the sinusoidal. As a last item, I mean, if they're gonna go back in, Mr. Grand Mason agreed to come and meet with some of us and go over what we consider to be some of these built-in hit areas.
Yes, no, that's very, very good feedback. I mean, that's part of the public feedback we really want to get, is where there are areas of sensitive receptors, where there are areas that, like the, you know, where there is local knowledge about the trucks pulling over and stuff that we'd want to take into consideration so we can minimize the noise as much as possible.
Open up those centerlines at the intersections, though. That's what's driving a lot of people nuts, who are living right close by.
Right.
I mean, for sure, one of the things.
Right. We recognize that as well, too, that they were, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I know this is about the 28 Project repaving, but if you go on the DOT map for the state of New Hampshire, it's proposing Route 11 going to Laconia, 140. And it looks, from the looks of it, Alton's gonna have more rumble strips than any other town in the state. You know, it's affecting property values, people are talking one reimbursement on their taxes. When you go down, put them down Route 11, that's all vacation homes. That's Alton's majority tax revenue. What's gonna happen, what's gonna happen when we can't meet our financial obligations? Fire people that work for the town? What's really concerning me is that we got employees of the state dictating to the people that are paying their salaries what they're gonna have. They're not listening to our elected representatives, that's why they're there.
Oh, thank you.
Scott Ducham from Wolfboro. I just, I just, I think we just, I feel like I'm just beating a dead horse, because I've talked to Bill Cass, I don't know how many times, I've talked to everybody in the state about these rumble strips. I've been driving trucks since I was 21 years old, since 1981. I drive up and down these roads almost every day, and a truck that's weighing over 80,000 pounds. Running equipment, running the dirt, you name it. You people don't have a clue. I took Jeb Bradley for a ride, and he couldn't believe, when you hit one of those centerline rumble strips, and the truck just feels like, you ever driven a truck when it's overloaded with firewood? And you got a half-ton pickup truck and you got a cauldron wood on it? What that feels like? Well, that's what it feels like in an 80,000 or 90,000-pound truck. And there's guys out there running 120 over the road, in these big trailer trucks hauling wood. And, you know, you put those things in the middle of the road, and then you put them on, even if you put them over the, on the white line. When I'm coming down, going to Jedry's Pit, I saw, as soon as we hit that Robert's Cove Road, I descend into the breakdown lane, because it takes me a while to slow down, whether I'm loaded or even if I'm empty, I like, you gotta drop the gears and you just can't burn your brakes trying to get down, and his pit is headed downhill. So you pull over, you be courteous to the cars behind you, and you run the breakdown lane. My tires are 24 inches, the duals, about 24 inches wide. So I get over, and I've got enough room with enough road, breakdown lane on each side of me, probably gives me maybe a foot on each side. So if you're gonna, if you were to put a brake, I tell you what, you're gonna do it anyway, probably, and you're gonna end up putting them in the stupid, wrong place, even if you put them in there. In order for me to run down that breakdown lane and be courteous and not have my truck shake to pieces, and have to put another dash in it that I just had to put in a year ago at the Prezios, because the whole dash of my truck broke to pieces, I've gotta, I've gotta have at least two and a half to three feet off that white line and able to straddle that breakdown lane to be courteous. And so, so I'm trying to straddle the breakdown lane over here, and then the cars are going around me, and they gotta worry about going over on their breakdown and on the centerline, and so we're both doing this. It makes no sense. You guys are making the roads dangerous. And not only that... Not only that, in the wintertime, you take a road out here, or you go up to Route 16, up to 28 through Wolfboro, up to Oscepee, and you've got rumble strips headed south and you've got the lights, and you've got no rumble strips headed north, and the roads are soaking wet all the way, for three days. You take a left, the roads are bone-dry in the wintertime. That water sits on there, and what's the state do? They come right along every morning, put more salt on it, and we all, all our vehicles are toast after five years. Brake lines are all rotted off of people's vehicles. How, what good is that? How safe is that? When people's, when you get flakes of rust falling off of people's frames, because they go out and salt, and it gets all up underneath their undercarriage, because it really, there's no, the roads are basically wet on the centerline, you're pouring that salt all over, and it just, it gets up underneath your frame because it's not dissolving like it was if it was a freezing rain, a ice storm, or if it was, you know, snowing two inches an hour or whatever. You know, and so you use it, more salt, you're wrecking the environment by doing that, that, like someone else said. It's no lie. When someone passes you, you're getting debris kicking up at your, at your, the person that goes around you, they're kicking debris at you. I can, I can feel it, you know, and it's absolutely insane. And then you go around, anywhere, go across, like truck down 140 for the past couple of days, doing some work over in Gilmington. And you go down 140, and you see the edges of the white lines, it doesn't really know, the road's not really wide, and to have a, put a rumble strip in the middle of that centerline, it would be absolutely stupid, because it's too curvy a road, and people are really, they're gonna, people always, you know... So you go down one, I go down 140, I go, I go out here around the traffic circle, I've called, I've called District 3 a million times. Fix the damn shoulders. Put the money into gravel in the roads. The edges of the road are broken right off, and over the white line into the, into the travel lane. And the guys that are doing the patrol, the DOT guys that are out of the patrol shed, they don't give a damn. They just, no one told them to fix it, and they're not gonna fix it, but you guys spend, wanna spend millions of dollars making the roads in worse shape so they're just maintaining the roads that you have.
Scott, I know, I know we've had these discussions before. I have faith that our personnel try very hard to keep up with the needs, the maintenance needs on the road.
I've been telling you for two years, Bill. Around, when you come from Route 11...
I know, and I know, you call District 3 all the time, too, and we can, we can talk after, but...
Yeah, talk, no, we'll talk right now. Because when you come up Route 11, and you go around the traffic circle, and the, and the big trailers are driving into the, into, off the road, and there's big potholes, gigantic potholes, that they're dropping into, and I've been telling them for years, why don't you guys just go get a few yards of gravel and fix that up, so everybody's not driving into it? Then the cars drive off, and you see all the scrape marks from the undercarriage of their vehicles.
Scott, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but let's go back to the rumble strips.
Okay, let's go back to the rumble strips. I'm just saying, my point is, is they're wasting money, and they could be fixing, taking that money and putting it into, into fixing the roads, instead of ruining the roads.
But if we can stay on the rumble strips, and then we'll get into another, maybe hearing on maintenance. So I had another date.
Okay. So my point is, is that, okay, and then the other thing, so I'm driving, two weeks ago, I'm over in Maine, over towards, over towards Saco in that way. And even I was, a couple years ago, I was up in upstate New York. The way they do the rumble strips out there, and they're just, just a couple weeks ago in Maine, when they come, when they, when they have it on the centerline, they're spacing it out like every 10 feet. And they're very thin, and when you hear them, they just, they just barely hum, and you can feel it a little, you can feel it enough, but they don't make it sound like a damn, someone's running a bands, a rip saw. And then on the, on the white lines in upstate New York, they take and they, they just make a little groove, like the width of the, the width of the, the white line. What's wrong with that? I just don't get it.
Hopefully, hopefully, some of the changes that we made with the sinusoidal, the so-called rumble strips, are intended to make that softer hum.
So how, how deep are these gonna be now?
Do you know how deep they are?
The sinusoidal rumble strips are, they vary from a 16th of an inch down to a half of an inch, 16th and a half, and it goes every 14 inches, and it's going up and down.
So, so why can't it be even thinner than that? Why can't, why can't you just...
So actually, there've been, there've been multiple states, and Minnesota is among those that have done much research for actually looking at different shapes and different, different spacings.
What's it cost us a lane mile for these rumble strips, to install them?
Rumble strips, I believe that... Rumble strips, um, I believe that, um, is it per foot? Is it, um, the regular ones are 32 cents per foot, and then the sinusoidal is, we estimate will be 60 cents per foot based on other states and also by calling the, the rumble strip miller. So, so they are almost double the cost.
And so that...
And that's the cost per foot. Yeah.
That includes all the state police and all the trucks and all, and everything?
Yeah, that's the, the whole project divided by the miles.
Yeah, when they were doing that, uh, when they were doing that, um, putting them in, you're going up, you're going, they're headed north, and I'm headed north. And it's like a big convoy, but there's no, but there's no traffic control out there. Everybody, you have to like set over in, when they're doing the center line or the white line, whatever, you gotta get over, and there's oncoming traffic. Everything's moving. There's not like a stopped procedure. It's dangerous. You, you guys are making the roads more dangerous. I don't know. It's like, it's like a big money thing. You guys are getting money from the government, or something, someone's getting rich off of this. People are sick of hearing it. You know, I, I live out in the woods, and I, I would, I would be a complete basket case. I'm a basket case because I have to drive on these crap roads. You guys spent, did a beautiful job, Coleman, when he rebuilt that section of Alton quite a few years ago. And, you know, is, and then you put that skinny mix stuff on it, and now the road's like this. It's like, you, you went up there and then you ground those things out, and you, they, they, they crack sealed the whole road a couple of years ago, a few years ago, and then they ripped them all out. There was, I brought in pieces of the rubber.
Right. No.
You know, you guys are wrecking the integrity of your road. When you have those rumble strips in there, all that water's just going down into the road bed. And it's just, and that's why the roads are heating because you've got thoring over here, and you've got no thoring over there. It's, it's, it's ridiculous. I don't know why, why no one, why there's no common sense here. Why, why isn't there, Bill?
There, well, I, you know, I've, I heard that, and I heard another gentleman said, "We have rumble strips all over on all of the interstates. The concern about the water infiltration into it is, you know, has not manifested itself. We have not seen that, we have not seen that in other states."
Bill, you could take...
Now, I will say, there wasn't, there weren't, there was when there was a very thin layer of pavement because we had requests to put rumble strips in Route 16 up through Albany and Madison after we had done them in Osiphe and Lakeview and places.
Yeah, by the way, they're a lot thinner up there, because I was up there to the...
That's right. We had to put them thinner.
In Route 16, they're, they're like half the thickness of what they are out on 28. It's, it's ridiculous. So you, so inconsistent with whoever you do, no one's paying attention. But getting back to the water going down into the roads, you could go out there right now, and you find a crack that's in one of those rumble strips, and you could take a soda bottle, fill it up with water, pour it in that hole, and it'll just go right down. Yeah, until...
Scott, I gotta stop you. Your five minutes are up.
Yeah, all right. Well.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joanna Morehouse. I live off of Bay Hill Road. Um, I have two houses up here. He's right about those strips. Um, my husband and I drive on Route 16 and also all over New Hampshire. Um, I don't know if you'll be able to hear them, but I have recorded them as I drove on them just to prove that they're a lot louder on 28 than they are on 16. I don't know if this will even work, but, do you think it'll work? This is 16.
The bottom of your phone, I think, is where it comes out, the sound comes out.
All right. All right. That's what we get to listen to. I moved up here from Massachusetts to get away from, uh, '95, and, um, so much for peace and tranquility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Howard, and I don't live in close proximity to the rumble strips. However, I commute five days a week to Concord. And this past winter, um, at the new, new project in Bernstein where they made all the improvements, it was a snowy day, and the plows hadn't been through, and my car started to slide a little, and it caught the edge of the, the edge of my tires caught the rumble strips, and that literally spit me right out into the other lane. And thank God, there was nothing coming. But you know what I thought of? That poor woman who died last year, uh, coming home from Wolfboro. You know, I can't prove that the rumble strips caused her accident, but I betcha you can't prove it they didn't. And I do believe that these are dangerous. I mean, my husband requested the police report, and there was very, very little information about that accident to prove or disprove. It wasn't even investigated. So, you know, I just know what happened to me, and it was scary. And, um, I've been driving over 40 years, accident-free, knock on wood. And, um, I do think that they are dangerous. And I don't know if it was you or another gentleman I had a conversation with a couple of years ago about the fact that in New Hampshire, it was an effort on behalf of the Department of Transportation to narrow our roads to save money. So by narrowing the roads, we've made an unsafe situation that you wanna rectify by putting in rumble strips. I say widen the roads back out. Let's give, give the roads the shoulders that they need so that people aren't so tight on the road. There's no room for error on a lot of roads.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I am not in favor of the rumble strips, and I feel very badly for people who have to listen to them all the time. I did hear them before the, um, the ones that you removed. I could hear from my house up on Stockbridge Corner Road. And, you know, I can't even imagine hearing it 24/7. So I really think you need to listen to the people, all of us. We are saying, no, we don't want them. We do not want them. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
My name's Shayna Lauren, and we just moved over to Swan Lake Trail, which is right off of 28 after Bay Hill Road where you live. And it's a passing zone, and we hear it all day long, people passing. And I don't think if you're gonna put the rumble strips in, there should be no passing zone where rumble strips are. A, it's dangerous, and B, it's very, very loud. Now, all these people came out here tonight, and you guys are taking your notes. We don't want the rumble strips. Are you going to put them back in whether we want them or not?
That's...
I mean, honestly, you, everybody who came up here and spoke tonight do not want them.
Right. What?
Is the state gonna do what they want? Doesn't matter what we say.
Well, I, I, again, we, we, I mean, there, there is, I mean, we feel there's, there is a, a valid safety benefit with them. And as, as Mike said, we're trying to, uh...
Well, this is our town.
Yep. No, I realize that. I do not. I do not.
Why don't you come over my house for a day and sit outside in our backyard on a house we just built? It's awful.
The only, the only thing I can say, I mean, I, I understand the concern. I've, I've come up and...
Well, you understand, but you didn't answer my question. Are you going to put them back in?
We're gonna take...
We get to vote.
We're gonna take the feedback and, and, uh, and see what we're gonna do. Right now, we're planning to put them back in. We're planning to put them in with the revised guidelines.
So you're going to put them in?
We've tried to be sensitive to the concerns and, and make adjustments to strike a balance that would hopefully diminish some of the impacts of, of, of the noise, but still retain the safety benefit.
Right, but...
Now, there are some specific areas we, we heard about tonight that the gentleman talks about. The passing lane, I mean, the trucks going up and, up and down the hill.
I mean, there should not be rumble strips in a passing lane. Right. Or...
Pardon? No. But...
Or just make 28 not a passing zone. If you're gonna put them back in the center line, don't make it a passing zone. I live right on a passing zone. Coming right down a hill where people do 70 miles an hour, and they're crossing over.
Yeah.
So obviously, we hear you're going to put them back in whether we want it or not, so... We don't want them. If we could vote against the state doing it, that would be lovely.
Yeah.
And you really should take the people's con, feedback and tell your boss that we don't want them.
Right. No, and, and like I said, we're, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to take the feedback, trying to take the, uh, concerns that we heard and, and, and make a, um, try to strike a balance that does retain some of the safety benefits and minimizes the impacts for, for the noise.
It's very loud.
The only other thing I'll say is that in other areas of the state where we have the, the rumble strips, it has been, um, you know, there, there are areas that have been very successful in, in, um, reducing the accident rates and reducing the...
Right. On, like, bigger highways, like 93?
Well, no, it was on roads like Route, it's on roads like Route 16 and Route 101, uh, Route 202.
16's a lot bigger than our little eight-mile...
No, this section of road, this section of 28, a limited access highway with very few driveways, with big shoulders, with high speeds. This is the type of road that it has, uh, substantial benefits on. An area that, uh, that had come up a number of years ago, the traffic volumes along Route 202 west of Concord through Hopkinton and Henneker, where, um, uh, there were a number of, um, fatal accidents along there, and, uh...
Right, but these rumble strips can also cause accidents. I'm...
You know, I, I've heard that anecdotally. I mean, all I can say is the research doesn't, doesn't point, doesn't point that out.
Right, but you guys are making that research, too.
No, no, this is, this is national research that, that, that's being looked into and stuff. Huh? No, I, that's exactly what we're here to listen, listen to. Okay. Good. I don't.
All right, folks, if you wanna speak, please come up there.
Anyways, we don't want them back in.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
I'm Joe McDonald. I live on Lily Pond Road. I'm probably 1,500 feet plus through the woods to Route 28. I'll try to get through this without getting angry because I have not had a full night's sleep since you've put the rumble strips in. I can't believe our selectmen have not put a lawsuit against the state and against every one of you individually because negligence is a solvable thing for a state employee if it's found a big negligence. And obviously, you people have not done your research. Forty or 50 years ago, they started putting sound barriers on the sides of turnpike because of truck noise, before they even put in rumble strips. And now you people are making noise on the sides of a road, and you're breaking our town ordinances by doing it. If I can hear them over 1,500 feet away from the highway and they wake me up in the middle of the night, there's something wrong. You people are breaking the law. You're doing everything that you can to make our roads more dangerous, and you're trying to justify it by saying you have statistics that, that say you can do whatever you want. You work for us. You're supposed to work for us. And if you don't wanna work for us, you should leave because this is our town, our state. We do not want the rumble strips. We can tell you right now, they destroyed life in this town. No matter where you live in this town, sometime of the day, you can hear them. I don't wanna take up your five minutes. I think that's enough said, but think about it. Forty or 50 years ago, they started putting sound barriers in just because of truck noise. And now you're making noise, and you're not putting up any sound barriers.
Thank you. No, I appreciate your concern.
It seems to me that money is at the end of this. Uh, how much of a grant is there, and what does it specify in the grant exactly? In other words, what's paying for the rumble strips?
Um, it's, it's actually, it's, it's not, it's not necessarily a grant or anything. We do have, um, a certain allotment of, of, uh, safety funds that, that go specifically towards safety improvements. Part of that, that funding was used to install the rumble strips originally under that statewide rumble strip project. What would go on today, once they get put in, it becomes part of the, the routine maintenance. So, um, yeah, our funding isn't necessarily the, the, the concern with, with, with this here because it's, it's actually coming out of the, um, you know, the, it's part of the project cost to resurface the road to reinstall the rumble strips. So it's not specifically safety money at this point, it was originally.
And what you're saying is that there is no legal tie between the funding for the strips and the resurfacing of the roads.
That's correct. Right.
In other words, if the majority of people were to have a referendum on this particular item in the town of Alton, then they would vote to have rumble strips or not have rumble strips. But they could still have their roads resurfaced. Is that correct?
Uh, I, I guess I'm not sure what you're, what you're, what you're asking. If the town of Alton had a, had a referendum that said they didn't want the rumble strips?
The rumble strips.
Yeah, we would still resurface the road.
Because of pollution and all the other reasons that you've shaken down tonight.
Yes. We would still resurface the road. We wouldn't, we wouldn't hold resurfacing the road hostage to, uh, putting in the rumble strips, if that's what you're asking.
The money would not be put into the rumble strips. Could they be used for widening, widening the roads on the edge where people have said they were breaking down and they were dangerous? So the same amount of money could be spent, but in a different way, but still for the roads.
We're gonna do that anyway. Anytime we resurface a, a road, we would, um, we'd put gravel along the shoulders to back up, uh, to back up the edge of the pavement where, where it would. So I think they would be separate, they would be separate issues.
Okay.
I'm trying to separate the two, the two that, if you try, I think you're trying to tie.
I think the betterment of the roads would be my primary concern. My secondary concern would be, uh, not having the rumble strips because the majority of people don't want them. I don't think statistics prove anything. You can use a number to go either way. But I do have one question. It's really off the subject, so I have to ask the chairman if I'm allowed to ask my question.
Does it pertain to the rumble strips?
Well, it pertains to a passing, um, a breakdown lane to turn in.
I'll allow it. Go ahead.
It's on 28, no, I'm sorry, it's on 11, going in New Durham. You go into Johnson's. I worry every time because if you're coming from New Durham and you're turning into Johnson's, you're in a pass, you're in a turning lane. But if you're coming from Alton and you wanna turn into Johnson's, you're gonna be in the same lane. And this road was resurfaced maybe four or five years ago. They did a wonderful job. Why they did not put in a turning lane, they have, they have plenty of land. And I think it is a serious problem. There will be a serious accident there. And I figured if I get it on the minutes here, maybe someone will be, uh, alerted to the problem, and maybe something will be done. Thank you.
No, I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Virgil McDonald, I wanna give you the statistics for our corridor in Alton for 28. Fatigue and fall asleep center line, 12. This is from January 2005 to May 2019. Fatigue, falling asleep, center line, 12. Animal hits, 167. DWI's 10, weather, 45. And inattention is 48. I mean, those are statistics here over 14, 15 years. You know, and you're using statistics from down south. You're taking that whole corridor and putting all the statistics together. And then you're jamming these things down our throat when we have to live here with them. And I don't think that's right. I mean, you can see the people that come out, you've seen your last meetings, that people come out and say they don't want them in Alton. And I think you need to take that under consideration and consider not putting them in Alton.
Good. Thank you.
I'm Andrea Dudley from Moose Point Road in Wolfboro. And I'm particularly concerned with the section from, um, Wolfboro Falls up through where Route 109 crosses Route 28 in North Wolfboro. And I think consideration, as you've heard from all of these people, needs to be given to balancing safety with the noise disturbance this causes. Um, along as you come out of the falls and head beyond the New Hampshire Boat Museum and up to Auto Care Plus, it may look like a commercial area or wooded area. To the north and south of that roadway, behind a very small barrier of trees, are very dense neighborhoods. We hear the trucks downshifting and upshifting already. I can only imagine the nightmare that this will create if we have to listen to even mumble strips rather than rumble strips. So I would think that you need to pay attention to the noise disturbance that this will cause us. I'm asking you, don't implement these. I'm asking you, don't implement these, it seems like a solution looking for a problem in this case. I would also like to applaud the Alton Selectmen for hosting this session, and I heard some reference that you're willing, the DOT is willing to sit with Alton people and discuss options. What is the plan for Wolfboro? I have heard some people here tonight, but I think there's a lot more section of road in Wolfboro that will be impacted than even the one here in Alton, and I'd like to know how we can get more people to have input. I think there was some confusion, there was late notice, and they didn't understand that this might apply to the town.
Okay. No, certainly, are you with the government, town government?
I'm not, but we do have a selectman here tonight.
Okay, I mean, if, this was intended to be a project level meeting, it was actually originally, because we thought like Kingswood might be as close to the corridor as it was, but knowing it was a, you know, it was the Alton Board of Selectmen that asked us to have a particular public hearing, we ended up having it here. But we would certainly be willing to meet with either individual property owners or have a meeting in Wolfboro. We certainly want to afford the same level of input, so.
I think I would certainly, as a private citizen, I would request that, and I will certainly make that request to our select people, because I think Wolfboro needs to have input. We don't need to have happened what happened with the previous installation in Alton, where they just appeared and nobody had any say. So again, I'm opposed to them vehemently, and I think the safety, I'm not convinced that the safety need outweighs the disturbance. Thank you.
And I would just say, in Wolfboro, I think a lot of the area is reinstalling what is there.
But again, I don't think people, and that's an area that I'm close to, and there's business owners here tonight who own bed and breakfasts and inns that are bothered by that currently, and I don't think we ever had an input into what was done there. Again, they were just installed, we didn't have an input. So I think we really need and deserve an opportunity to be able to speak up in our local community. But again, thank you, Alton, for having us here.
Thank you.
This is Mrs. French from Trashside Road. When the other lady spoke about the funding, I was hoping to get at another aspect of that, because I was curious about that. Is there some kind of federal funding behind this? Are they basing this, the need for these strips on some kind of federal project?
Not specifically, like I said, we do have, and Mike, maybe you can explain the HSIP program, that we have safety funds that we put towards, you know, affordable and try to install, countermeasures.
I know, those funds coming from the federal government.
Whether they be rumble strips, signing guard rail, but maybe you can speak a little bit.
Right, I could talk about the safety program specifically. So each year, the DOT is part of the federal funding that we receive for highways, which is about, in round numbers, about $150 million, we use it throughout the state. About $10 million of that is intended for safety improvements. Some of that we spend on improvements to spot locations with high number of crashes, intersection improvements usually, and other types of improvements that we do, like rumble strips, are meant to be proactive. So attacking roads where crashes may not have happened right in this particular spot, but crashes being random as they are, they're as likely to happen here next time as somewhere else. But installing rumble strips, guard rails, things of that nature, too. So the low-cost measures like that, the higher cost investments we make in intersections, too. So that's all specific highway safety funds that we use for that.
I see. So there is some level of federal monies involved in this?
Yes.
Okay, and that's always disturbing in the sense that the people that set these up in the first place are not the ones living there and trying to sleep with this disturbance going on all the time. So I think, and I think that grates on people at the local area. So hopefully, you are able to listen to the people and take that into account, and if there's no real strong evidence of horrendous accidents on that section, I would think that there would be some flexibility as to removing them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Murray. I'm one of Wolfboro's selectmen or selectwoman, and I want to thank Alton for having this public hearing, but I think Wolfboro would definitely like to have a public hearing. We do have a section with the rumble strips. We do care about our quiet atmosphere and our New England charm, and as with Alton, that noise takes away from it. We also have an issue with removal of two crosswalks down in Wolfboro Falls, and I think we could address both of them at the same time, and so I think that that would work out well for Wolfboro. So we'll get in touch with you and we'll set a date. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Hey, Richie Lane again. I'm sorry, I didn't catch you two fellows' names. What was your names?
My name's Bill Cass, I'm the Assistant Commissioner.
Bill, Bill what?
Cass, C-A-S-S.
And the other fellow?
Mike Dugas, D-U-G-A-S, he's the state, he's our Highway Safety Engineer.
Okay. Well, from what I'm getting at tonight, people.
Rich, can I interrupt your moment? Mrs. Medley hasn't had a chance to talk, or Mrs. Hammond? Could you let her?
Just real quick.
Nope, nope. The rules, I was letting everybody talk first before you came back up the second.
I got it.
Sandy Hammond, I live on Rhine's Road, which is right here in East Alton, where a lot of this noise is going on and the problems that we're experiencing. And I'd just like to point out that your own statistics that you had for us tonight, I'm just going to take one page. All of these that I'm going to mention, the rumble strips would not prevent these accidents, okay? Animals in the road of any type would not be prevented with rumble strips. People with drugs in their system, rumble strips are not going to affect their driving habits. Weather is what it is. Rumble strips are not going to save anyone's life. If they're skidding on the road in a bad storm or ice, failure to yield, judgment call, that rumble strips will not prevent that. Vehicle defects, rumble strips are not going to prevent that. Objects coming off from a vehicle in front of you or beside you, rumble strips are not going to prevent that. A medical condition, it is what it is. Rumble strips will not prevent a medical happening along that road. People following too close to others, rumble strips not going to prevent that. A vehicle or a trailer that comes loose, or they lose control of it, your rumble strip solution is not going to work. People in Hanniford's parking lots, I don't get that one. I don't know what that means.
Oh, that was statistics for Hanniford's parking lot.
That's the town's, not your statistics?
Yeah.
Sandy, that is, the statistics you're looking at tonight was provided by the Alton Police Department for the citizens' knowledge of what goes on in Alton. This wasn't their statistics.
Okay, whatever it was, they're counting that into accidents that rumble strips are probably would help. It's not going to happen with these problems. The last one was miscellaneous, inexperienced, misjudged driveway, rumble strips are not part of that equation. So your numbers, whether it's from the town or what you're using for numbers, have nothing to do with some of these incidents that have been on the highway, and rumble strips would not address it. Again, people who live along this road, you cannot see all the development because of the nice nature of the trees and the, we like to be off the main road because it is lovely, but these people who live within a mile or more can hear these day and night, summer especially, windows open. So these people have altered sleep patterns, it affects their health. They don't need this. This is not good for public health problems, heart disease. People who cannot get back to sleep once they are awakened in the night, they could sleep four or five hours a night, and then they fall asleep going to work. Now somewhere else, they might have an accident. That is not what we want in Alton. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I would just point out that, I mean, you're right about the, all the different types of crash causes and accident causes, but you know, the rumble strips are specifically looking to address lane departure accidents or run-off-the-road accidents, and on rural highways like in New Hampshire, that's a fairly high percentage of the fatal and severe injury accidents, so.
According to these statistics, we're talking over 11 years, 20 accidents where people were fatigued or fell asleep.
Yeah.
Or unsafe passing, you add another five. 11 years.
Good, thank you.
Is there anybody else like to speak that haven't had a chance to speak yet before Mr. Lane comes back up?
Right there.
She's been waiting. I'm sorry, Karen, I'll get you next. Go ahead.
Marge Nickerson, 400 Roberts Cove Road. First, I'd like to say, I think any of us who've taken Statistics 101 in college knows that you can read or make statistics, say whatever you want them to read. What I'd like to add is that I live at Roberts Cove Road, I am one-half mile from Route 28. I am not a light sleeper, but in the summertime when my windows are open, I do get woken up by the rumble strip. So that seems to me excessive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Alden, thank you for having this forum tonight, and I just want to reiterate that the last time that we had something happen in town where the rumble strips went in, it was a hot-button issue. And a lot of people were upset, and I think by the showing here tonight, I think it's very nice that people came out. A question I want to ask, I looked online, is it accurate that the rumble strips are slated to start at Barnes Avenue on Main Street and continue toward the traffic circle?
Actually, the limits that are shown are the limits of the paving project. This is a paving project, so the different segments that are shown are from the beginning of paving and then all the way through the end of the paving.
But there aren't any rumble strips slated for Barnes Avenue?
Not on 11, not through the circle, because any, the first thing we looked at, it has to be 40 miles an hour or over, it has to be 28 feet or over, before we even consider it.
Okay, it was a little confusing online, that was probably mine.
Well, and the reason why it's listed, because it is a paving project, so that section will receive new pavement.
All right. Well, the other thing, I wanted to also state that the noise is unacceptable. It's unacceptable when I'm driving and you hit those rumble strips, whatever the reason, turning from Bay Hill Road onto 28 to go to Wolfboro, and I go out of my way to try to go around them, which is very unsafe, because those rumble strips are very close when you're making a turn, and of course, you know you have to pull out pretty quick to get out onto the road, the main road, with people coming at high rates of speed. So my other question is, throwing out that, the tier program here stating that shoulder rumble strips will be installed on undivided highways with these characteristics. Posted speed limit of 40 miles per hour or greater. Why don't we step this back? Why don't we drop the speed limit? If the speed limit goes down to 38, I would be inconvenient. Sure, I'd like to get somewhere as quick as anybody else and have a nice time, it's a scenic byway, why don't we drop the speed back? Does that take us out of the running for having rumble strips if we're at 30 miles, 38 miles an hour? I remember back, as many people here going through Pittsfield many years ago, what was the speed limit? 35 miles an hour. And I used to say, you come from all these other areas, the speed limit was higher, 35 miles an hour, and you knew you would do 35 miles an hour. Well, it might be a little bit higher, but if this could help all my neighbors and my peace of mind and everyone else's, I want that speed limit as an option, why don't we drop it back, so that we can maintain the lovely lifestyle we have and not have to worry about different types of rumble strips? There shouldn't be rumble strips in the middle of Alton. Who would be the entity that would set priority for speed limits within the state? Can the town petition that perhaps we have a speed limit of 38 miles per hour between the Alton traffic circle going to Wolfboro, and perhaps maybe Wolfboro could continue it from their journey from there to Oscepee? Is that a possibility?
It's probably unlikely. I mean, it's the local traffic engineer for the state that sets the speed limits, it's truly based on engineering studies and 85% of speeds.
But then, engineering studies, thinking of speed, speed is, as we all know, can be a cause of accidents, so why don't we be proactive and bump the speed limit back a little?
The rumble strips are based by the engineers, too.
No, no, speed limits are a very sensitive issue as well, too. I would say that that type of road, limited access highway with wide shoulders.
And my fear is that we're at 55 miles an hour now.
Speed limit of 55 miles an hour is probably appropriate for that. It would be.
I don't want to see the next step of, oh, well, we have rumble strips, I'd like to get to Wolfboro faster, let's put it up to 70 like going up to New Hampshire. I mean, it's, if it's something that helps the quality of life, that we bump it back a little, how many people would be in favor of something like that?
No, I mean, part of it, you know, there is, I mean, there are state statutes that govern speed limits, and it's also based on engineering studies and prevailing speeds. Part of it has to do with, you know, setting speed limits that are reasonably expected. You set an unrealistically low speed limit on a road that doesn't have the characteristics that support it, and it just gets ignored, so.
Could do 38 and no passing. Sounds good to me. Just an idea, but I really think with the people that have turned out, we have a lot of constructive ideas. I really don't think we need to have this as part of the Alton landscape. It's a scenic byway. I didn't realize it was a scenic byway. I learned something. And I think we should maintain the character of our town and the beauty of our area and our enjoyment. We choose to live here, and it should be a place we're proud of and a place that we can enjoy in our homes. And thank everyone for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody, appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I'm Wilson Breen. Live 1.4 miles off of 28 on Rhine's Road, and I get the noise from the rumble strips, 1.4 miles, and that's with a hill between us. I just had a quick question. You mentioned a new style rumble strip that's supposed to be quieter. Is there a possibility of putting in a test, small test strip that we can all get an idea of what would be forthcoming? And I, not being a betting man, but I would, I would put my money that those rumble strips will remain in Alton. Thank you.
I hadn't thought of that. We can look at that, whether a test strip early in the construction project, that's an interesting idea, we'll look into that.
Well, I think everybody would like to know what effects these new strips will have. Are there any local, other towns that have these new strips?
Danville, wasn't it?
Yeah, Danville's not too local.
No, it's not, no, it's not. And it was, there were actually two small test sections that were done in Danville, I don't know if that was back in 2012, maybe, or '13, and they're on the stripe, and they're not exactly, ours would actually be quieter than those, because those are And they're not exactly, ours would actually be quieter than those because those are more frequent than the kind that we're proposing. So those are the only two segments that exist now in New Hampshire.
Okay, I have one thing that's a little off-subject, but coming off of Reins Road onto 28 going south, it's an upgrade. And the coming, we're looking northbound traffic, there's a blind turn and the traffic, the speed limit is already 50 miles an hour. And a lot of heavy trucks are up to speed or beyond, trying to take advantage of getting over those, that first grade, upgrade. So I'd like to know if that possible speed limit could be reduced for another quarter of a mile before comes to Reins Road. It is very dangerous to turn off, and I'm sure other people who live on Reins Road know about this.
Okay.
And also, the trees are not trimmed as often as they should be.
And that's Reins Road?
Yes, Reins Road, coming onto 28.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll look at it, yeah. We can see if there's trimming, yep.
My name's Tim Pello. I live on the corner of Wolfborough Road and 28 North. That's approximately seven-tenths of a mile up from where the rumble strips start in Hanaford. Of that, four-tenths of that is 40 miles per hour, four-tenths of a mile. And then it starts up the hill. The problem being is coming down over that hill, if you're coming down 28 south, you have a passing zone. Going north, you can understand because you have the trucks, like was mentioned earlier, safety issue, they pull off, people are passing. But coming south, you have a passing zone, and it ends right at the 40 mile per hour sign. It just doesn't make sense. For one, these rumble strips are right there. You know, my mother lives 500 feet down the road from me, and she's 100 feet away from the road. I'm just up the road, I'm 100 feet from the road. And all these passing zones, that's, you know, people talk about no sleep, and that's all you hear. I mean, it's ridiculous. I mean, there's a lot of other things can be done. You know, you talk safety and safety funds, you know, things like that. Take out a passing zone, maybe in some other sections, and lower the speed limit. I mean, right when you hit Wolfborough Road, you have a turnoff that they did put in, which helped. But they're still doing 55 miles an hour there. There's been more accidents at that intersection, not just on the highway, but coming off both Wolfborough Road, coming from town, and in front of my house because of the design of the intersection. And people don't stop, whether you put up a red flashing stoplight. But, you know, I'm not for these rumble strips. I don't think anybody here is. And Mr. Cass, I sent you an email back in March of 2017, and I'm still waiting for a response.
Okay. What was your name? I apologize.
My name is Tim Pello. So tell me this, please take these people serious because my trust in you right now is I think you just give a lip service. So I'd like to thank that you're going to take this serious and, you know, listen to people. But, you know, I would at least like to hear back from you or somebody in your office.
Sure. Yeah. No, I apologize if I got overlooked. I will, I will look for it.
I'll yield my last two minutes to Richie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, from what I get here, they're going to put the rumble strips in anyway, people. Tomorrow, I'm going to call the governor's office and express concern at the governor's level. They won't listen to us. They're not listening to us. They already said they're going to put them in. All right? Did you hear that? Am I the only one that heard that? They're going to put them in.
Well, I would, I would say that, no, no.
So I'm going to call the governor's office tomorrow and express my concerns with them. Maybe they'll listen.
Mr. Lane, I would say we are, we are trying, we are trying to listen. I guess that, as I said to the woman before.
You already said you're going to put them in.
Well, I said we're trying to.
You just stated that.
I'm also saying that we are trying to strike a balance between making an effective safety measure and minimizing the amount of noise. We have tried to, we've tried to.
All these people here don't want them.
Well, you also, we also haven't, we also haven't put in the mumble strips and see how much of a diminishment that is.
They won't listen.
Well, like I said, I will say we have tried to listen. We've tried to be responsive in revising the guidelines.
My name is Dave Huzzy. I live on 128 South Camp David, right on that big corner right there. That's a 50 mile an hour limit, and there's no way you can go around that corner on 50 miles an hour. But that's not what I'm here to talk about. I'm talking, I have a DOT license.
A CDL?
A CDL, which is required by the state to go take a physical. Now, I took my physical, I had to get a CPAP so it would help me sleep, you know, because I kept waking up so many times a minute. I got that done, and all, lo and behold, here come these rumble strips right in front of my house. And now they go over. My dogs do what they're supposed to do, is warn me if there's noises out there. They bark. I wake up from the rumble strips, my CPAP is doing nothing for me now. Nothing, absolutely nothing. But I'm still required to get it from the state, but you guys are giving me sleep deprivation. You know, this is the stupidest thing I've ever heard of.
My name is David Conway. I live at 1748 Wolfborough Highway, right at the town line of Wolfborough. I'm a Alton resident. I did testify before the public works. I gave written testimony, or I presented my verbal testimony, but I had it all prepared remarks. I do work as a Realtor. I'm representing currently Mr. and Mrs. Beard, who live at the corner of Lily Pond Road. They've been trying to sell their home for three years. Yeah, I represent a family that is trying to sell their home at the corner of Lily Pond Road. And they've been trying for three years. It's a beautiful colonial home with a Cape Edition, a beautiful detached two-car garage, 27 acres. Many people have looked at the property. And what the point I made in Concord was that when people are looking at homes, they sometimes narrow their choice down to two or three properties. And the Beard house is always number two on their list. It's not number one. They always, the potential buyers pass over that home. It would have worked beautifully, and the factor is the noise from the highway. There is a passing zone right there across the street. Dan and Sharon, Sharon and Lauren built a beautiful home. I'm sure it would easily, in the value of $400,000. I'm sorry to say that if you suddenly woke up some morning and said, I think we have to sell, I just don't know whether there's a buyer that would, you know, pay, once they viewed your home as beautiful as it is and the setting and all. If the noise factor was out there, they might, again, your home would be on, second on the list. So if you cannot sell your home, and that's the situation we've had with some folks along Route 28, then I think what we're talking about is a loss of value. It's a taking of value by the state in creating a noise factor that wasn't there before. And this, you know, taking of value is something that has to be taken into consideration. When a safety improvement is proposed somewhere along a highway, I think the question I would hope from the professional road builders and all is, you know, how, how is this safety improvement going to impact the population? Does anybody in your department ask that question when you're proposing putting up a guard rail or putting up a blinking yellow light at an intersection that's, you know, proved to be dangerous? You know, how is, how is this improvement going to impact the people living nearby? My home is a thousand, my driveway comes out to 28, I back up on a hill 1,000 feet. Now that the windows are open, I've heard rumble strip noise at 1:00 AM in the morning. It usually starts about 4:00 or 5:00 with traffic coming out of Wolfborough. But we hear it all day long as well. I think it's a quality of life issue. We know that the geography of our community of Alton in particular is very different from the flat geography of southern, the southern end of this Route 28 corridor. And we know that the noise echoes. We've heard that from many, many, many folks. When the rumble strips first were impacted, we heard testimony from a family, a mother. I still recall her testimony. She had a young child, a son, with ADD who was barely getting three hours of sleep a night. And I felt so grateful when the state did realize that an error had been made in putting those rumble strips south of the circle. When I think of highway planning, I think of high, professional, well-thought-out plans. My son lives in Brunswick. When we go up to visit, we go through a little stretch of highway that connects the main turnpike to Route 295. They've installed a 60 mile an hour, high-speed toll lane. And I've watched two or three years of planning going into that sort of an improvement. And I would like to think that when rumble strips are put in, it's just not an incident, something incidental. It's something that's been well-thought-out. And the impact to the community is the prime factor that, you know, has brought about this decision. The community needs this. They want this. I haven't heard any, you know, the whole summer theme of this evening has not been we want this. I haven't heard anyone come out and say that. What I've heard over and over again is we do not want this in the new repaving. I've also heard the possibility is, could the town of Alton hold its own referendum and have a vote that would, the results of which would, you know, be reported to the highway department? And what I hear Mr. Cass saying is we would continue to pave your roads, but we would have to respect the results of a referendum, perhaps. So I don't know that that was just said as a way of tempering, you know, the concerns that are being expressed. But I sure hope that if a referendum was held and a vote was taken, because this is not just a Route 28 concern. I believe the intent is to see rumble strips improve, you know, installed eventually on Route 11, not just in Alton, but in other areas of the Lakes Region that have the same geography, that have the same caring community members who are speaking up and saying the quality of life has been impacted by the noise from these rumble strips. My final concern is with our police and fire department personnel who work on behalf of us as a community. I understand that the police chief and the fire chief have both reported, asked their members of their department not to make an aggressive response to an emergency situation if they're traveling on the stretch of Route 28 where the rumble strips are in effect. In other words, go at a safe travel speed. I believe that's correct. My understanding is correct on that. I see police officers, you know, making safety stops along the highway. I feel concerned for them now because there's a big educational effort underway to give police officers good clearance when you see them ahead making a stop. I have to go across the rumble strips on 28. I see actually fewer police doing safety checks and safety stops on 28 since the rumble strips have been put in. I don't know whether that's just, it's a, it's a more difficult challenge now to, to make a traffic stop on 28 when there are the rumble strips there. It has to be at the back of the police officer's mind, whether it's an Alton police officer or whether it's a state trooper. I feel concerned for them and for their safety now that we have rumble strips on 28. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Tracy True. I live on Roberts Cove Road. My family actually landed here back in the 60s. My dad did the land clearing, was part of the original crew for that corridor of 28. And my dad is no longer with me, and I know that he would be absolutely appalled to know that these rumble strips are there. As Dave, living that close, I am woken up at all hours of the morning hearing the rumble strips on the backside of Roberts Cove Road. In the summertime, it's very disturbing to not even be able to open up your windows. I don't live in the AC. I never intended to. My family landed here from Derry, and if I wanted to live and have this quality of life with rumble strips in my backyard, I guess I should have just stayed in Derry. The other part that is very disturbing to me and that you guys need to be aware of, my family also has property on one of the islands on the lake. And I can hear those rumble strips in the middle of the lake. Again, this falls back to what has been brought to you by this town and our people here. We ask you, it is a scenic area. The oldest summer resort in America is a mile from my house. It does not belong in Alton. Please listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is, my name is Mike Hoyt. I live in 1023 Suncook Valley Road, which is obviously 28. I'm the first property in Alton coming from Barnstead. I probably live closer to that road than anybody in this town. But I chose to live there because I wanted to live on the water, and I was willing to live with the traffic. Putting rumble strips in will probably, I will probably never sleep again. My family won't sleep. Probably houses on three or four side of me will never sleep again.
Are there rumble strips there today?
No, they're not.
You're on 28, right at the Alton-Barnstead town line?
That's correct.
So that's south of any area that we're talking about now, but.
Well, it's only a matter of time.
Okay, okay. Now, let's go.
I guess, when, when does our quality of life, when does our real estate values and for the whole town overshadow the dozen or so accidents that could probably be corrected with rumble strips? When does, when does our quality of life overshadow those dozen or so accidents over 10 years? Doesn't seem like it's worth it to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Northridge. I live up at Gilman's Corner in East Alton. And this is for the selectmen. I noticed there's three here tonight, and there are two others. I urge you people to take a strong approach towards the state on this. And if they decide they're going with these, I also urge you to come up with a Warren article for next spring's meeting, raising the money to fight them financially with legal action. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Well, Mark beat me to that one. I'd like to know from our, Mr. Cass, what law is there put in place that says you have the right to run over our town with these things? You must have some directive or a law.
I guess I wouldn't phrase it that way. I mean, our mandate is to maintain the state transportation system, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's not maintenance.
Safety is one of our, is one of our core missions as well, so.
I'm sorry?
Safety is one of our core missions as well, too, so.
Okay, well, I'm not going to repeat my numbers because I think you, and I think everybody here understood what I was saying. The numbers are worse. You cannot prove either way whether rumble strips do save lives or do not save lives. What we can prove by people's testimony here, that they do grab you, they talk about motorcycle testing that they did. Well, those motorcycle operators were well aware of the rumble strips. They were told to cross those rumble strips. Now, you've got motorcycles that come in one week every year. This town makes a lot of money out of the motorcycles that come through. Now, they don't expect these rumble strips to hit them. What do you think's going to happen? We're going to have problems. The other thing is, they talked about the proposed Route 11 and 140 rumble strips that will be coming in. If you think that there is echoing from just 28 alone, we have, that lake is within a valley. It's across water. Sound echoes and is magnified over water. Can you people imagine what this town is going to sound like when those sounds from both sides of that waterway hit? Not to mention what the islands, another tax property that this town makes a lot of money off. We, we count on our vacationers to come up here. We count on our vacationers to come up here. You're making the properties worthless. No one's going to come here.
Because of some rumble strips on the highway...
It's the noise. It's the noise. You're listening to us for two hours, and I'm sure we're annoying you right now. But what you did is annoying this town, these people 724 a week. That's it. Thank you very much. I'm trying to be, I'm trying to maintain my temper and, but I just feel as though you're not listening to the people here. That's, my brother's correct. That is my brother. You're not listening to us here. It's made quite clear, we don't want rumble strips. We talked about the devices in cars. You didn't even respond to that. We talked about bringing down the speed limits, and you keep saying, "Well, engineering in the roads." If you could put rumble strips in and mandate where they're going to be, you can mandate where the miles per hour can be in this state. Don't tell me you can't do it.
No, we could. We could raise, we could drop this, we could put a 30 mile an hour speed limit out there. But do you think anybody is going to be driving that road and go 30 miles an hour?
Well, you put 50 mile per hour, and I pass it like crazy on the highways. Nobody pays attention. Let's be honest, there, you post the speed limits, everyone goes over them. But I'm saying, have some respect for the people here.
No, I didn't mean to be flip. I do have...
No, I understand that, and I'm trying not to be flip as well. I'm just trying to say...
I have great respect for everybody here. That's why we're here, that's why we're here listening. We are trying to make the best decision we can. You know, as far as all the statistics and stuff, you know, rumble strips do prevent lane departure accidents. We're trying to find a way to try to make them as unobtrusive as possible, but still maintain the safety benefit, so...
Like I said, I am all for safety. I'm all for lower the speed limits. Put in those devices in the cars that are coming out. Help us out with that. That's money that could be spent. You're talking $150 billion in, what is that, one year's worth of federal funding?
That's about what the state of New Hampshire receives for federal transportation funding.
Why don't you look at the cost of those devices for lane departures for the cars? I'm sure it's a lot less than that.
Robin, I'm going to, you're at five minutes. You got some other folks that haven't had a chance yet to speak?
Okay, well, we'll just talk.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Gray. The last three years, I've had the opportunity to represent you in the State Senate. Second issue that people have contacted me about, first, Second Amendment. Second one, rumble strips. I'm not kidding you. The second most frequent thing that I have heard as a senator is rumble strips.
They drive us home.
And why? Because the people feel that they've been lied to. We went to the meeting at the campground, and they told us those rumble strips are installed exactly per the direction. They weren't. They were too close to the intersections. They were too deep. They were, they were, they were. And these people have been living with it. There is no legislative support for the people who represent Alton for those rumble strips. Representative Howard has spoken. Representative Varney is here. I haven't seen Representative Feeney, but, and I'm the senator, okay? That's your whole delegation. Every person who represents these people down in Concord don't agree with them. And if by some means the new rumble strips are going to solve all the problems, try them somewhere else, not in Alton. Get the data that says that we're there. We've got lane departure software that the road agent, that is going to become more and more frequent. Now, we are kind of Yankees here, and we are going to keep our trucks and stuff for a long time. But that's coming. You know, one of the things about the rumble strips is, Alton was the first place that really got a whole bunch of them, you know, for, at least that's what the people in Alton feel. Okay? And so we're saying, okay, now we're going to do this new project, we're going to try out these new rumble strips, or I should say mumble strips. Do it somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Fairman Eaton again. I just want to speak to one thing about the fact that this is a public hearing and to thank you for having it here in Alton, for our selectmen, for requesting it, and for you folks coming. But I just got the most awful feeling in the last half hour that the consensus here is that you're just going through the motions. And that is completely against everything that our state, our town, our state and our country stand for. This public hearing needs to be listened to. That's why we've all taken the time to come here tonight. And please, respect what our representatives, what our senator, what the townspeople are saying here. You cannot come away from this meeting without knowing that this is something that these people do not want. And you need to listen to that. And to do otherwise is being arrogant and irresponsible. And so I ask you, please, respect the fact that we've had this public hearing and for the reasons that we've all invested in it. That's what our whole system is about. And so implore you, please, I can't, we don't, we shouldn't need a referendum. I mean, it's clear how this town feels about this. And we shouldn't have to take legal action. That's not the way it works.
I appreciate that concern. I do respect what everyone's here, and I assure you, we are listening.
Thank you. That's what we really want to hear. And we'll know the results if you have listened. Thank you.
Joe McDonnell again.
I just have one question I forgot to ask. I'd like to know how you justify disrupting 100% of our quality of life to try and stop less than 1% of the people from having an accident? How do you justify that?
That's a...
You can't tell me that's a safety issue.
The only question, I don't know how to answer that. I don't know if it's a rhetorical question.
You can't tell me it's a safety issue because all these people that are not getting sleep at night are more dangerous on the road than that less than 1% you're trying
My name is Larry Helene. I live at the top of Bay Hill Road and Route 28. And I have one question for you that may backfire on me, I don't know. But I'm interested to know, how many phone calls, emails, letters have you received from Alton residents in favor of these rumble strips?
A handful.
A handful?
Maybe.
Well, we're more than a handful here in town, and everybody else in town is against these rumble strips. I owned some cottages on Route 11, just above Sandy Point. I'm glad I don't own them anymore because if the rumble strips go in there, the highway is right next to the cottages. And I feel sorry for the people who have bought those cottages. You people have no idea how much you're disrupting our town.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Paul LaRochelle, bottom of Bay Hill Road, off of Happy Hollow. And I'm the newest selectman in town, and I was voted in by the people of this town. And the one thing that I swore that I would do when I came in to, into office is that I would stand by the people. And that's what I intend to do. So what I'm asking you to do is to really consider what the townspeople are saying. You've had, since 2016, you've put in the strips, you've had opposition, you've had lots of research throughout the country, the state, and other towns. What this town is simply saying, they do not want any of the rumble strips. Period, end. The research has already been done. You've had plenty of time to research. And in my opinion, I stand with the town and to say that no rumble strips. We don't need them. The town don't want them. If there's anything I've learned, living in this town for 20 years, when this town doesn't want something, they mean it. Thank you. Desmond Douglas. He said your concern is lane departures. On your list here was all departures. Do any of these roads have rumble strips on them? Is it provided by the state? Or...
Hmm, I think...
Is it in the handouts up, out there?
That might be some of the information that I'm trying to find. That's the list of corridors that we had identified and ranked, yes.
All right. Are there rumble strips on these other roads?
Not yet.
Not yet. I think they're identified.
All right, there's rumble strips on all the major highways. How many lane departures do you have on 93, 95 and all them? Even if they're not fatal, there's still lane departures. It's not saving a life. And people have a tendency to overreact when they hit the rumble strips, which cause more accidents. Because most of the shoulders are down below the pavement, and when they go off, hit the edge of the pavement, it spins them out of control.
You know, I've heard that, and again, there isn't, I mean, I haven't had any indications, any research, any feedback that that is an incident.
I've done highway construction for years.
Lose control. It's anecdotal, but we haven't seen that reported in any of the, you know, national data.
I've done highway construction for years. I'm nationally certified to do highway closures. You want to slow traffic down, make the lanes narrower. They do it in Europe.
Lauren K. I was at the selectmen's meeting when you came to that meeting, and some of the individuals talked about the lack of sleep, and it's come up several times here tonight. Has there been any studies of, I guess we'll go call it secondhand rumble strip deaths? No, I'm serious, because it's like secondhand smoke. If these people are getting sleep at night, and I went home and I looked on the internet, that's one of the purest forms of torture, is to not have people get to sleep. So, has there been any studies nationwide of, I don't know, 100 feet off the road, 500 feet off the road, et cetera, how much it shortens people's lives? People are saying quality of life. You people are losing part of your life. It's shortening your life. So, you know, you're probably losing a year's worth of your life because of these, of this noise. So, you know, there's kind of a balance here, and I know you people, I don't want to say you have blinders on, but I realize your thing is to protect the road, but as Dave Countway mentioned, there's the also part, you're taking people's lives away from the noise. So has there been any studies about that issue?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I can't agree with a lot of people saying, "Let's just have it in Alton." I think it's a nationwide problem. I would think perhaps we ought to concentrate on getting the noise down from highways everywhere. You know, if you can have pavement that has less noise, you wouldn't need all of these barriers and things like that.
So if I may respond to that, as far as, so the rumble strip noise is an issue all over the country. Because Highway Safety Agency, you know, like us, we want to try to save people from dying. You know, we don't want anyone to die if they're sleepy, whatever. So it is a low-cost safety improvement. States have put them in, and like here in New Hampshire, they found from the rectangular or the corrugated rumble strips that they do cause a lot of noise. They cause a noise and vibration in the vehicle, but they cause excess noise and vibration outside. That's why different states, states larger than ours that have more money and can do much more rigorous research, have done research, looking at different patterns because they want to, like Bill said, balance safety and quality of life. The excess noise does no benefit. You need to have the noise and vibration in the vehicle to alert the person that they're departing the lane. So we've looked at, there's been in the last, actually since like 2016, starting in maybe 2015, there've been many states that have done a lot of research for the same reason. I'm sure our counterparts in other states have sat in similar situations like this. I live on a state highway, too, and I don't have rumble strips in front of my house, but I understand the whole noise thing very well, unfortunately, from trucks and motorcycles. But just to, but to your point, as far as for the research regarding lack of noise, we don't want to get there. And lack of sleep, we don't want to get there, and we don't want to, and that's what these other states, the sinusoidal rumble strips, Minnesota is leading the research on that and leading the implementation of sinusoidal rumble strips. And I've been speaking with their, my counterpart there, and they have not had complaints since they've put in sinusoidal rumble strips, which is, and again, we don't have them here, we just have test sections. But from what they got before with all the complaints from the noise in the more traditional rumble strips, they're not getting, they have not gotten, actually, no complaints, which I think is phenomenal. It's the same group of people living in the same places. So that's why we've done the research, and that's why we want to balance safety and all of our quality of lives. We don't want to, we're not looking to reduce your quality of life at all. We want to increase, you know, everyone's quality of life. So we don't want to have to get to the point of doing research for lack of sleep. We want to prove it so people can sleep.
Let's test them in front of your house.
But you're telling me you haven't studied this yet. You haven't studied the secondhand deaths, or the secondhand shortening of lives. So again, you're playing, we'll put them in, and then hopefully it won't bother people. So I guess I'm going to repeat what I...
Other states have done that, sir. Other states have put in these quieter ones.
It just seems kind of strange to me. If it was a, I don't know, a Philly lulu bird nesting issue, it disturbed the Philly lulu bird, they wouldn't be in for a second. But for individuals or people, it doesn't seem to matter. I mean, you know, perhaps that's a way to address this.
Sylvia Leggett again. I have done a lot of reading on rumble strips in the last three years, as Bill Cass is well aware. And one of the things I've also seen from a lot of other states is, they're also removing rumble strips because of the issues that have been created. And a little bit further on their statistics, for centerline rumble strips, you know, you said it's like a 45, 46% reduction. Well, anyway, they also, on one of the federal reports, 641 or whatever, crashes are reduced, they start at 18%, not in the 50s or 60s. Maybe 18% of that crashes are reduced on the centerline. And on shoulder rumble strips, it starts at 14%. And these are statistics right from, I believe it's the report 641. And Mr. Cass, several times tonight, you stated Route 28 is a limited access highway. And I would like to hopefully convince you that limited access highway no longer exists in Alton. There may be limited points of entry onto that highway, but off of that highway, there are access roads everywhere, and there are people everywhere. It's no longer a limited access highway. And you talk about the wide shoulders. I'm reading one of the New Hampshire DOT reports, and I actually think it was the bicycle group, because I noticed that there's maybe four, five, six DOT people that get together almost every month. Sally goes to these meetings with bicycles. And I noticed that one of those meetings, they talked about, oh yeah, the shoulders are four feet wide here, they're five feet wide here, they're maybe six feet wide here. But it's very erratic. It's all over the place. And if you go up 28, yes, you may, you may find the military wide shoulder in one portion, but in many other portions, you're not going to find those wide shoulders. It's very inconsistent. So I don't think, I don't think you should lump us into limited access... So, I don't think, I don't think you should lump us into limited access highway and wide shoulders and say, full steam ahead, we're gonna put those shoulder rumble strips back in. Because I think I also questioned, there's other sections of Route 28 south of us that have very similar shoulders, that are maybe, well, maybe they're six inches less wide. And Mr. Grand Mason, three years ago, when I asked him about it, said, oh yeah, I goofed. They should've had, they should've had rumble strips on the, well, and then it would've been on the edge line, and he would've been taking out more, more edge line rumble strips. Do you people know that over 40 miles of edge line rumble strips were removed in 2016? There was 16 miles removed in Alton, and there was over 28 miles removed in the town of Chesterfield. That's when we moved the white line, edge line, they called them rumble stripes. That's what the official term is, rumble stripes. Because of our outcry back in 2016, they took them out on our shoulders, thank goodness, or on our white lines. And they also took them out on the white lines in Chesterfield, 14 miles on each side. So, 28 miles in Chesterfield, 16 miles in Alton, and then our three miles of, three and a half miles, you know, south of the rotary that was put in incorrectly to begin with. And I take that back to not having any public meeting back then, not having any public input. You certainly have the public input here now.
Yes.
Okay? And I heard two great things tonight. One was, when you're coming out of Wolfboro, don't increase it to 55 miles an hour until you get past the intersection for Rhine's Road and Roberts Cove Road, because it is almost a blind intersection. Somebody coming out on Rhine's Road and trying to turn out onto 28, and somebody's coming 55 miles an hour, that's an accident waiting to happen. So, decrease the speed limit there, get rid of the passing zone that the Countways are hearing as people were first coming out of Wolfboro. And then on the other end, I heard the exact same thing. When people are coming up from the traffic circle from Hannaford's, it goes, you know, there's a passing zone coming down, and you go from 55 to 40, like, just like that. So, extend that, extend that speed limit out a little bit, also that way. And I know Mr., they do have a guru in the state. His name is Bill Lambert. Bill Lambert sets the speed limits, I've been told, for every single highway in the state of New Hampshire. And you know what? It's based on the average speed people are traveling on those roads. So, if there are speeds on those roads, in my mind, the speed limit's gonna go up. And that's from information, I think that came out in the Plymouth meeting back in June of 2016. So, please, listen to what people are telling you. I truly hope they are not installed anywhere on this corridor going from Alton to Wolfboro. But if indeed you have to do it, please, listen to what people are saying to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Appreciate it.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mrs. French, I'm gonna hold you up just a second. This lady hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you so much. I know it's getting late, but there are several of us here from Wolfboro. Lynda Murray, one of our selectmen, asked you to do a hearing in Wolfboro. I will reiterate that, but I've also been here long enough that I feel like I have to say what I came to say. And what impresses me so much tonight is that there is real passion in this town against rumble strips. And those of us in Wolfboro who might be getting them in our neighborhoods have even more reason to be incredibly anxious and fearful that this will be inflicted on our beautiful residential resort community. It's a travesty that the state can come in and do this in a town where people have had to live with them and are telling you, it's horrible. So, I just want to say that. I also feel like maybe you're being beguiled by the promise of federal money, because the state spends so little to maintain its highways. We've got red-listed bridges, we've got roads in terrible condition. And this is almost a smokescreen to say, well, we're going to do something for safety because we've got this new technology. This technology is not loved, it's hardly proven, and I think you would do well to slow down, take care of the roads that run through our communities, and be mindful of the fact that we are a strong tourist economy and that people really value their peace and quiet. I also want to say that you're assuming, or I get the impression you're assuming, that life safety is more important than our peace and quiet, our quality of life, and our rural residential areas here. I think you've proven to us that very few other towns in this state have had rumble strips foisted upon them, and that here, you are in very hostile territory. I hope you will reconsider this choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that, listening to people talking here tonight, it seems to break down into two issues. One, that this town is different from Manchester or Nashor or whatever. People come here for peace and quiet and to have something different, to have maybe a way of life that they recalled a few years back or whatever, that we've been able to maintain. So, this type of thing is particularly corrosive in this type of a community. It's like the problem we had up north with the Northern Pass, where people did not want these huge towers up there, because all they had was the tourism. And basically, there's no real industry in this area. It's, the tourists are the industry. So, there's a different, a heightened concern here. And then the other thing you're dealing with is that there is a spirit in New Hampshire where people are self-reliant, and they feel like they're responsible for taking care of their own lives, and they don't need a government, you know, a nanny state government watching over them, putting these strips on the road necessarily. When you look at the actual accident report over 11 years, that doesn't seem excessive. I could understand it somewhere else, but over 11 years, that doesn't seem excessive to me. So, I think you're dealing with those two issues, that people are very self-reliant, and they just, they don't want their life ruined, the life that they chose to live here, for some obscure safety thing that someone in some remote area of the Capitol or whatever has determined is better for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne Ryan, Wolfboro. I'd like to ask a question. Has the engineering division done any sort of a noise study as to decibels?
Yes.
And what is that?
I can get you a copy of it. It's on our website as well. Two years ago, two years ago, when the issues came up in Alton in particular, we did do a noise study around the ones in Alton and several other locations around the state. So, we do have that data. I mean, our findings of that were that they were noisier, they were slightly noisier in Alton, but the traffic speeds were higher. And the correlation was between the traffic speeds and the noise decibels.
Okay, well, maybe the, maybe the selectmen in both towns would make themselves avail of that. The other question or statement I would have is that, on your DOT rumble strip guidelines, it states that rumble strips are one of the engineering strategies. And I would suggest that also you say that the Federal Highway Administration has, states here that it's a proven low-cost safety mechanism. I say that the low-cost version that you are proposing is at the expense of the people in Wolfboro and Alton for their peaceful rural lifestyle. And it also is a deterrent to the tourism of our scenic communities and our scenic byways. I would suggest that you go back to the drawing board. It may cost a little bit more money to do it in a fashion that doesn't disrupt the two towns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Raymond Howard. There's a lot of talk in Concord about mental health issues in this state. Well, I don't live near these things, and I don't know how these people who do keep their sanity. I think these things may be contributing to some of the mental health problems we have in this state, and that maybe ought to be studied also. And as far as statistics go, I'm just waiting for the police to come out and say, you know what? We could stop crime by quartering soldiers in people's houses. You think the people would stand for that?
Is there any of you else that'd like to speak tonight? If not, in closing, I would like to thank all of you folks for coming down, and the folks in Wolfboro that came down were invited for this public hearing, because they were hoping they'd only have one. To you folks, I thank you for coming down and listening to everybody. Yeah. And I know it's not an easy seat at times, nor is the Board of Selectmen. But I would like to say to you, I hope you'll go back to the governor's councilor and your bosses tomorrow morning and say, Alton does not want this. Right. We don't for our life, our lifestyle, our peace and quiet. We understand the safety reasons, I understand the safety reasons, I think most of the folks do, but they don't want it in our community. We don't feel there's been enough need to bring this back to our community. We'd like to see maybe do some more studies, something like Mr. Card said, sleep study, which was, Nancy, yeah, I keep forgetting your name, the young lady there, Sally. You talked about there were studies there, if you could make those available. I think it'd be great for us to do like the Northern Pass did, say no to the pass. Put up signs, say no to the rumble, call the governor's office, call the executive council and say, if you want your jobs coming up again in a few years here for election, stop this. But I'm asking you folks to go back and tell your bosses, you've heard from the people, we don't want it. Mm-hmm. And we'd like to see it stopped there, so we wouldn't have to go further. But as the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, also hearing from two members, which we had the majority of the night, we'd have to put a referendum on our warrant article next year. So, I would hope, at least you'd wait till then before you put it in, so we wouldn't have to ask you to remove it. Folks, thank you again for coming on. Thank you for being courteous and everything tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you. Have a great summer.